All right, welcome everyone to the regularly scheduled April 1st open session for tonight's city council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I would love to call the roll. Councilmember Calderon?
Here.
Councilmember Giroux?
Here.
Councilmember Boiles?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Baldino?
Here.
And Mayor Pimentel.
Here. And Madam Clerk, you will, you're in charge of the invocation today, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Boiles.
Will everybody please rise? Dear Lord, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts, seeking your guidance and wisdom as we gather to discuss the matters of our city. We ask that you be with us to inspire our thoughts and decisions, and to lead us toward actions that promote the well-being and prosperity of El Segundo. Grant us the clarity to see the needs of our community, the courage to address the challenges we face, and the compassion to serve with integrity and fairness. May our discussions be filled with respect and understanding, and may our decisions reflect your love and justice for all. We pray for the safety and health of all of our residents, businesses, employees, first responders, and for strength and unity within our community. Bless our leaders with the wisdom to govern wisely, and the humility to serve selflessly. In your name we pray, amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Councilmember Boiles. We have four special presentations to start the meeting today. First, we will have a proclamation for National Library Week. Over to you, Councilmember Giroux.
All right, proclamation, City of El Segundo, California, whereas libraries spark creativity, fuel imagination, and inspire lifelong learning, offering a space where individuals of all ages can explore new ideas and be drawn to new possibilities. And whereas libraries serve as vibrant community hubs connecting people with knowledge, technology, and resources, while fostering civic engagement, critical thinking, and lifelong learning. And whereas libraries partner with schools, businesses, and organizations to empower the El Segundo community by providing access to resources, and expanding access to services and partnerships that strengthen the entire community. And whereas libraries protect the right to read, think, and explore without censorship, standing as champions of intellectual freedom and free expression. And whereas dedicated librarians and library workers provide welcoming spaces that inspire discovery, collaboration, and creativity for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers across the country are joining together to celebrate National Library Week, under the theme Drawn to the Library. Now therefore, on this first day of April 2025, the mayor and the members of the city council of the City of El Segundo, California, do hereby proclaim the April 6th to 12th, 2025, as National Library Week in El Segundo. During this week, City Council encourages all residents to visit the El Segundo Public Library, explore its resources, and celebrate all the ways that the library draws us together as a community. And accepting this should be Mark. Mark Herbert, is he here? Yes, he is. Library manager will accept this proclamation.
Thank you to the members of the city council for this proclamation, recognizing the importance of libraries and their mission to serve their community. At the El Segundo Public Library, it's our goal to help enrich our patrons' lives by sparking children's imagination, introducing new authors and genres to readers, providing a place where people can study or work, bringing new and engaging programs to the community, and opening up the world of entertainment, education, and information for everyone. I'm pleased to report that we have thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy-eight active library accounts, and last year, almost one hundred forty-eight thousand items circulated from the library. Next week, for our National Library Week celebration, I'd like to invite the community to the El Segundo Public Library on Saturday, April 12th, at ten thirty a.m., when we present New York Times bestselling author J. Ryan Stradel, who will discuss his books, answer questions, and be available for a book signing. RSVPs are required, and more information can be found on the library's website at www.elsegundolibrary.org, or by calling the adult information desk at three one zero five two four two seven two eight. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay.
Move back a little bit, Mark. Thank you, sir. There we go. Okay, here we go. Couple of photos here. And, and one more. Thank you so much. All right, our next item will be a commendation to our outgoing poet laureate, Hope Anita Smith. Thank you, Mayor. All right, so I want to just start by saying thank you. Is Hope here?
Yes.
Yes, all right, good to see you again. It's been a while. Yeah, it's great to see you. All right, whereas the inaugural poet laureate, Hope Anita Smith, served as liaison, advocate, and leader for poetry, spoken word, and the literary arts, using her passion and talents to inspire a community of artists, while making the art of poetry accessible and enjoyable to all ages. And whereas through Hope's mentorship, community poets found their voices and accomplished many firsts, including performing their original poems for the public at the Old Town Music Hall, and contributing their original work to create Wordmongers, El Segundo's first published collection of poetry. And whereas Hope Anita Smith's community collaborations, including the El Segundo Fire Department, the El Segundo Public Library, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, the Arts and Culture Committee, the El Segundo Women's Club, the El Segundo High School, cultural institutions within the city, and numerous individuals, has left a lasting impact on the city of El Segundo. And whereas appropriately, we celebrate Hope's accomplishments as El Segundo's inaugural poet laureate during the month of April for National Poetry Month. Now therefore, on this first day of April 2025, the mayor and members of the city council of the City of El Segundo, California, do hereby take great honor in commending Hope Anita Smith on serving as El Segundo inaugural, excuse me, poet laureate from January 2022 through December 2023. And I know John Pickhaver is going to say a few words and introduce, I believe, the new poet laureate, but Ms. Smith, would you like to say some words as well? Please?
I knew that I was going to be here. I did not know that I was, that this was happening. But what I'd like to say is that it has been an honor and a privilege to be a part of the El Segundo community, and I especially want to thank all the poets that have showed up this evening to say farewell, for my farewell. It has been an absolute delight, meeting the community, getting them inspired to write poetry, crying with them when they've written things that even they were amazed that they could do. And, and I know that we are turning it over to good hands with Kwaku, and I can't wait to see what he does. But I just want to thank all of you for welcoming me and making me feel the love of the community. And it has been a privilege. Thank you so much.
Don't go too far. Let's, let's do a picture, please. All right, Chair Pickhaver, the floor is yours to introduce our oncoming poet laureate.
Yes, good evening, council. I have the honor of introducing our next poet laureate. Born in Gambia, Kwaku Ambimbola earned his MFA in poetry from the University of Michigan Helen Zell Writers Program. He is of Gambian, Ghanaian, Nigerian, and Sierra Leone descent. Ambimbola's first full-length poetry collection, Saltwater Demands a Psalm, was published by Gray Wolf Press in 2023. The debut collection was selected by Taimba Jess to receive the Academy of American Poets First Book Award. In 2024, Saltwater also received a gold medal Florida Book Award, and the inaugural Nosiret Yassini Poetry Prize. His work interrogates the intersections of West African spirituality, ethnomusicology, cultural expression, and poetics to appreciate the legacies of Black literature on a global scale. He has worked as a teaching artist for the Detroit-based literary nonprofit Inside Out Literary Arts, and lectured in English and creative writing at the University of Michigan. He is currently an assistant professor of English and creative writing at Loyola Marymount University. And I am proud to welcome Kwaku Ambimbola to the podium as the City of El Segundo's next poet laureate.
Good evening, good evening, El Segundo. My name is Kwaku Ambimbola, and I'm a poet and professor based here in L.A. And fun fact, El Segundo was actually the first city that my family and I lived in when we moved to the U.S. So it feels like a bit of a homecoming and a full circle moment as well. I'm also so grateful for the strong foundation that Hope has left, and I endeavor to follow in her footsteps. And during my time as poet laureate, I also plan to host workshops and events that bring people into nature through poetry. In especially divisive political moment, I think that's important for us to focus on the things that unite us, and our shared fate of the planet is one of the greatest common denominators that we have. Additionally, a shameless plug, my first event is going to be on Saturday, April 19th, and it's going to celebrate the El Segundo Blue Butterfly. I was able to partner with Barbara Boland, master gardener, and we're going to do a poetry workshop, as well as a nature walk, to help people think creatively about their role as citizens in nature, and also talk about the efforts to conserve the beloved El Segundo Blue Butterfly. Try saying that five times fast. Finally, I'm also very grateful for the support of the Arts and Cultural Committee, as well as the, what else did I write? Arts and Cultural Committee, as well as the El Segundo Public Library as well. And we have a few flyers for the event. Thank you all for your time this evening.
Do you feel like a picture? Let's do it. I'm going to ask if everybody can step back just a little bit. Just a little bit back, a little bit back, a little bit back. Very good. And today, our new show has that, those dates and times of your event, and who you are. It's an introduction to you. People can watch on YouTube if they like. Another shameless plug for us. And one more. Excellent. Thank you so much. All right. Let's see, Wildlife Watch Team.
Yes, we have a special presentation on the Wildlife Watch Team, presented by our own chief.
Yeah, you're probably wondering what that, what that is, right, Mayor? Good evening, Mayor and council. So in response to the concerns that we get involving our, our wolves that come out during the certain times of the years, we're making sure that we are being proactive with it. So we have our friends from the California Fish and Wildlife, who put some of our people through training to make sure that we can address it appropriately. So I'm going to introduce them now. They're going to come up and tell you about the program, and going to hand out some certificates of people that completed the training.
Good evening, council. Thanks for having us. My name is Don Nelson. I'm a captain with the Department of Fish and Wildlife. And I want to thank you for allowing your volunteers to be trained by my department and my staff that stands behind me. I think it's going to be a great service to your city, and you'll see a lot of interaction between them and your residents in lieu of, in talking about wildlife incidents that are potentially going to be not happening, because they're going to be out there managing that. So with that, I would like to introduce a couple of my staff. First, behind me is Janice Munson. She is a volunteer with our department, and she is one of our lead trainers for this program. And behind her is Lieutenant Molesbury, and he was also here to do a day of the training. So I'm going to allow Janice Munson to give you a little background on the program, and then we'd like to give some certificates out to your volunteers that completed the program.
Mayor, members of council, thank you so much for the, the time today. And Chief, thank you very much for allowing your volunteers to participate in the program. The Wildlife Watch program is a three-day training class that we put the volunteers through. And for those not familiar with Wildlife Watch, if you think of Neighborhood Watch, how they address crime, Wildlife Watch is a program that addresses the wildlife issues within your community. And we train them to mitigate and work with your community residents to mitigate the wildlife issues that they may be experiencing. So during the three-day training period, they learned your city's wildlife management plan, because they have to learn that and know that when they go to doors to talk to residents. So we spent a day discussing the management plan. The next day, we talked about coyote ecology and biology. So they learned everything, almost like the whole nomenclature of a coyote. And then we talked about how to haze animals, so that they had that information to pass on to residents. And then we talked about canvassing protocols, what it would be to go out and go door-to-door to knock, and talk to residents. And then our last day, we spent in the field actually knocking on doors. And that day, our teams, we talked to about seventy residents around Sycamore, Dunn, Acacia, in that area. And then also, once we were done, we kind of set up near Dunn and Sycamore, and caught some of the people hitting that path where they come through, where there's been some issues, and handed out literature and talked to them about wildlife issues. So it was a very good day. It was probably one of the best enthusiastic teams that I've worked with, and I've worked with a lot of cities. And I have to say, this was an excellent, fun group. They were asking a lot of questions, and it was a great, great class. So with that, we'll get into the certificates. And I'm not sure if everyone's here, so we may just be reading their names and bypassing. Serena Boscovich. Giselle Calderon. I know she wasn't going to be here. Jo Camagong.
There's Jo.
Paulo Kandongo. John Donici. I know Alan Gregg. I know he told me he wasn't going to be here tonight. Tanner Griffin. Vicki Harden. Nancy Johns. Maurice O'Brien. Alan Shepard. And last but not least, Joanne Shepherd.
So lastly, I want to mention, this wouldn't have happened if Lieutenant McEnroe hadn't have reached out to our folks here. And I wanted to thank Lieutenant McEnroe for putting this together.
Hey, Chief, before we lose you, does this change or affect what residents should do if they see or encounter an animal of concern?
I'm sorry, come back again.
People see a coyote. Should they do anything different than they're currently doing?
Do the same things. We're going to report everything, and then our volunteers and everybody that went through this program will be documenting every incident where they see a problem occurring. They're going to go directly to those neighborhoods and talk to those residents immediately, do all the outreach we need to do to let them know what they need to do for hazing and stuff of that nature. So to have additional fourteen people that are going to go out there and do that is the benefit that we're going to get from the program.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
All right, now we are on to public communications, a time for which we block out thirty minutes. Madam Clerk, how many people do we have?
Two.
Two? All right, are they on agenda items, or?
One of the two is.
Okay, so four minutes for the non-agenda, five minutes for the agenda item.
I would like to invite Ray Lawson to come up.
Evening, city council members, Honorable Mayor. My name is Ray Lawson with the Western States Carpenters Union. We represent over ninety thousand members in the western states. We have over thirty thousand members right here in Southern California. And these are members that live here in the surrounding cities of El Segundo, and Hawthorne, and Lenox. Well, we're here today, labor is under attack. Organized labor is under attack, as you can see from the federal government. But we're here today to talk about tax fraud. We know Tax Day is coming up on April fifteenth, and we'd like to make the City of El Segundo aware that a lot of the construction projects that are built in these surrounding cities and in your city, a lot of them are being done, what we call tax fraud and wage theft. Cash pay. It's misclassification of workers, where the contractors are saying that they have so many construction workers doing A, B, and C trades, electric, plumbing, carpenter, and so forth. But they really just have them down as a laborer, and that way they can just pay them one straight rate. When we talk about cash pay, that's not good for anybody. The city loses out on taxes, on fire services, on taxes that could be going to the schools, and that could be going to the hospitals right here in this city. So we just want to make you aware that on April fifteenth, we, as the Carpenters Union, we always have an event where we recognize the tax fraud that goes on in the construction industry. I know we're trying to solve the problem of homelessness, and we, in that rush to do that, and to meet the arena numbers of the city, a lot of times, we look the other way when it comes to hiring responsible contractors that will pay a livable wage, and also will have healthcare, and also have an apprenticeship. An apprenticeship is important because it helps young people to be able to get into the middle class, to be able to afford these skyrocketing house prices that are going up. But without apprenticeship, you don't have that ability to get raises, and to get skills and training as you go through your apprenticeship. So those are the things that we want to make aware tonight for the city council. Thank you for hearing us out. And once again, just be aware that the construction that goes on in your city and the other surrounding cities, that it is going on. that it is going on out there. And we like to connect and work with the city council and get you information and get you resources where we can do something about this problem. And also, our volunteers, we have a great, what we call our CUP program where our volunteers help build projects. Talking about the libraries, we build bookshelves, we build birdhouses. It's all you have to do is supply the material and we can build it. You know, so we'd like to work with the city in building and develop our volunteer opportunities for maybe a sidewalk where a tree root has grown through it and it's uplifted. That's what we do. We do concrete work, we do drywall work, we do woodwork. So we're offering our handout to the city council tonight and an opportunity to develop that volunteering opportunity. So thank you for your time and thank you for hearing us out.
Thank you. And we have a tree for you. I mean, I got about 50-foot of tree that, well, 40 when they're done with it. Where's Rocky?
Uh, Rocky, uh, he's no longer, uh, he's no longer with us.
Oh.
He's enjoying retirement.
Oh, good. Well, nothing confused the enforcement czars like Rocky Pimentel showing up here. Maybe like, he's sort of my cousin, but not really. Uh, who's next? Sorry.
Michelle Leach, please.
Ms. Leach, welcome.
Hi. Hi, everyone. I'm Michelle Todi Leach. I've been an El Segundo resident for 26 years. And I'm a new member of the Arts and Culture Commission, or Committee. And it's truly an honor to be part of the committee. I'm really enjoying it and learning a lot. But I'm a newcomer and I'm still learning a lot about the role and how we collaborate with the city to create programs and events to make El Segundo such a vibrant place that we all love to live. But what stood out to me most is the incredible team that you guys have assembled. They're, they're smart and they're dedicated and they're deeply committed to bringing quality arts and cultural experiences to the city. And supporting like a rich cultural life that we all want to have in, in El Segundo. And, but tonight, I'd like to take a minute just to recognize one person in particular, which is Ally Mancini. And Ally is the Director of Parks, Recreation and Parks and Library Services. And before joining the committee, I really didn't know her very well. But over the past few months, I've had the pleasure of seeing her in action and let me tell you, she's super impressive. She attends, attends all of our meetings and she comes fully prepared with all the documents and information we need. She's a wealth of knowledge on committee matters, city matters, rules, regulations and city council. And she offers her professional insight and experience. And at these meetings, they're sometimes two hours long and this is after she's spent a full day at the office. So, you know, she, she just comes and she's vibrant and really a great addition to committee. But in addition, it would surprise me that in addition to overseeing the committee, she also manages the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, the Parks and Rec Commission, the Parks Renovation Subcommittee and the Ecotics Subcommittee, which you guys probably all know, but I didn't. She leads four major divisions: Recreation, Parks Maintenance, Aquatics and Library Services. She manages over 30 full-time employees and 150 part-time employees, which my son, every time he comes home from college, works for her. She's his boss. While juggling, and then doing all this while she's juggling all these really high-profile projects that, you know, we all want to see get through. And we've all had long, successful careers in business and marketing. And I can honestly say that I know very few people that successfully can have teams that large and run that many high-profile projects at the same time and do it as successfully as Ally does. And how we know it's successful is because we all love the Parks and Recs programs that we all take advantage of. I hope it's hugely rewarding for us because it's hugely rewarding for the citizens here and we all benefit from her hard work. El Segundo's Park and Recs is really a cornerstone, I believe, to what makes living here so great. There's hundreds of classes and programs and events offered every year for residents of all ages. And they're the defining reason why El Segundo is such a special place. But I want to also take a moment to acknowledge the departure of Randy, which I didn't know and I, I didn't, you know, I wasn't here on the Arts and Culture Committee before. But he was the previous Arts and Culture Coordinator. And while I didn't have the pleasure of meeting or working with him, I did come to learn how valuable that role was without that position. You know, none of this would happen. I mean, it would be very difficult for the things that we want to happen, happen. And it's really disappointing to hear the reason he left. Because he found more stability and support in a neighboring beach town. And even what's more concerning, what I thought, was that the previous person before him left for similar reasons. And that would all happen in a short period of time. So I don't need to tell you how costly that is to turn over people, both reputationally for El Segundo and economically, the time, the effort and the expense required to hire, onboard, train, build relationships and get them to a point where they can truly be efficient and be effective, you know, it takes a lot. And when that investment is lost, it not only impacts the city, but the whole team who's overworked and overvalued or undervalued. And, you know, I, again, I hope Ally loves what she does because she's so incredible at it. But that's, that's a lot on her plate and it just, it would be too much for almost anyone. And can you continue to have the high level of programs that we want to have? We need someone that represents the Arts and Culture, the projects that we want to undertake with the businesses and the, yeah. And the, and the artists and the city and the partners. So I believe everyone understands there's a cost of doing business the right way. But if we make investments wisely, the return is far greater for us if we continue to operate in a way that doesn't force us to start over and over and over again. So, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Leach.
Thank you.
Council comments. Council comments? I have two city managers before I ask you for your comments. Do we have, or can we tell for the people at home what the enforcement mechanism is if they suspect that there is a labor violation going on at a work site? Yeah, Elias fled the building.
Elias, do you have any answer?
He just snuck away from that.
A labor enforcement issue?
If we have an enforcement issue, if we think on, on a work site or a job or a wage theft matter, who can the people who are watching at home, what's their, what is their recourse?
So when we do award a construction contract, we make sure that all the forms are filled out properly. We check the records to make sure that the contractors are good with their licenses. Oftentimes, as Ryan knows, during construction, a lot of complaints go forward from the, mostly from the competition that the contractors are not keeping their promises with respect to minimum wages for different classes. We do check those contracts very closely and we check on references. And we make darn sure that, that the contractors are shooting straight with us, with us and they submit all the paperwork properly. And that is, that takes time, but we do that for every contract.
Thank you, Elias.
The Department of Industrial Relations oversees payment of prevailing wage. And so if, for example, the, it seems that the person's not getting paid the right amount for that kind of work, the Department of Industrial Relations oversees that. Someone who's paying someone under the table, if you will, cash, that could fall under a number of agencies. State EDV, Franchised Tax Board, there's a lot of different agencies that would have control over that.
And just to be clear, we're talking about, this conversation, we're talking about the public works projects done by the city where we are mandated by state to pay prevailing wage and to check those payrolls. That's, that's what this conversation is about. We do not take responsibility for any private works of construction because those are on private property with private contracts. But when you are building a public works project, we are mandated by state to pay prevailing wage and to check those payrolls.
Exactly. And finally, yeah, the DIR keeps licenses. And if there is a slightest complaint, they open up a file, they investigate. And, and we make sure that any project which is awarded is awarded to, to the contractors that don't have any investigation going on or any issue. So we make sure of that.
I think you're, I took the mayor's question to be about comments from the public which weren't really aimed at the city, I think were aimed elsewhere. It's also the State Contractors Board that is another place that they can lodge complaints.
I think it just, it's worth it for people watching at home to, if they have, if, if they suspect there's an issue, to know what the recourse is. And that we are not, obviously, the, the policing board for industrial relations, but that there are state.
And if you give me this opportunity, if the public have any question or if they have any slightest suspicion about a fishy deal going on, just contact Public Works and we'd be glad to investigate.
Thank you Director Sassoon. Also, I think it's worth noting, while we have the carpenters here, I, I was making somewhat light of it earlier, but we may want to pass it from our last meeting about the Milton the Tree issue if they have a charitable arm. I know that gentleman is desperately looking for a fundraiser to make magic from that 40-foot tree.
Yes, I know. I understand that, Mayor. And I was going to, Mr. Lawson, thank you for your comments. And you said you had information, please pass that along. I'd like to take that information or your card. I'll follow up with the tree matter as well as the information you want to pass along. Thank you very much.
Can you give it to Clerk? No. I'm, I'm sorry, we've, we've closed public comment. We have a finite amount of time.
And then with regards to Ms. Leach's comments, thank you very much. Now I know why Ally emailed me this one and said it's time for my evaluation. Uh, no. But as you know, the item's on the agenda tonight and part of the discussion will include the coordinator position. So stick around for that. So that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. And with that, a procedural motion. Can we have a procedural motion to read all ordinance and resolutions on the agenda by title only? Boils, so moved. Baldino seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed and no abstentions as you're passed? We have the consent agenda. Before we do that, Madam Clerk, would you like to address the issue with the minutes?
I would. I have a clerical correction to the March 18th regular meeting minutes. An incorrect, was it something I said? An incorrect item was inserted for number six of the consent agenda from the March 18th minutes. Corrected copies have been distributed to the dais and over to the city attorney and manager. And corrected copies will be posted on the website and my apologies for that.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any pulls from the agenda? I will pull item 13. Well, that said, I will take a motion to approve items five through 12 and 14.
So moved.
Second. Keldor for the first, Drew on the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay, item 13, the purchase of additional lockers for the El Segundo Police Department for the tune of $55,000.
Yes, sir. Putting on my glasses, sir. Good evening, again. So, yeah, we're not just purchasing lockers for one purpose. There's going to be a purchase we're looking to get for patrol lockers, 51 lockers. That's going to cost us roughly $41,000. The lockers that we're currently using are really outdated. They've had them for about 10, 12 years. They're made of low-grade particle board, if you will, that are falling apart. There's only 25 of them and there's not enough lockers to suffice for the number of officers that we have that get to work patrol, between patrol officers, investigations, motor officers. And we're going to move them from where they're at now. They're currently situated near our briefing room, which is not the most optimal place to put them. The new lockers, which are made of much durable steel, will be placed near the cars. So when you have your equipment that you need to transport from the car to the locker room, to the locker rather, they'll be pretty much 20 feet away, relatively easy to get to. And then we're purchasing an additional 24 lockers that are going to be used for all of our stuff that needs to get charged. So it's a charging locker, 20 additional of those. Given that all of our staff needs stuff to charge that go out in the field, when you talk about radios, body worn cameras, flashlight, stuff of that nature, we don't have enough lockers to fill the need for our officers that we have and for our professional staff that work the street.
Chief, did this go to bid?
No. This is a sole source item because we're doing one for $41,000. And we got the best, best kind of quote that we have right now, what we're, we're working with right now.
It's like a thousand dollars a locker.
It's roughly $800 per locker.
Eight, $800 a locker.
They will last probably 30 years versus what we purchased before. That really, again, like I mentioned, that we went kind of cheap in what we bought before, probably 12 years ago. If you lean on them a little bit, they fall apart. They're not really lasting. We purchased about 25 of them at one point and probably five or 10 of them are not operable anymore. And we're trying to move them to a better location where it can be easily accessible.
I don't, I don't want to henpeck. I, I just don't dispute that they need replacement. I just, I'm struggling to wrap my brain around what an $800 locker looks like. Like on Emirates or something like that.
No, they're, they're again, steel made. They're going to last a long time. They are two, 24 by 24. They're going to be very durable.
Am I the, am I the only one who thinks that this is a lot for lockers?
Remember that I was concerned they were spending 1.2 million on ERP system without going to bids. So of course I have similar concerns, but thank you for bringing it up.
I, I do not dispute the replacement. The cost though seems, the bid piece was a bit of a leading question. I don't think we should waste time going to bid on lockers, but similarly, $55,000 for lockers. The room is dead silent. I mean, it just, what do they pay at the high school for lockers? I mean, we're going to lockers.
I've seen enough.
They don't have any at the middle school.
Well, yeah, that's true. But I, I am at the point where I've seen enough public contracting prices to know not to be surprised by the cost of what we see for what you and I would expect to pay much less for. What, um, yeah, it's, I'm, I'm no longer able to be shocked by the cost.
I thought there was an extra zero. I just.
For the lockers.
I mean, what does a locker cost? It's aluminum. Doesn't have to be steel. Do they make them out of aluminum?
Where we're putting them again is going to be an area where they're going to be placed out of the building because right now we're running out of space. There's bags that are being kind of thrown around in certain areas where it's not safe. They're not secured because of the space issue that we have. And that's why if we take them outside, you want something that's going to be very durable, that's going to last a long time, made of steel versus the particle board that we have now. And particle board is going to come at a much less price, less expensive. But we're coming back to you in three, four years saying we need new ones. Because if we go to something that's less, less durable, it's going to be the same issue again.
I could almost tolerate that for a factor of ten.
I mean, it's not going to get cheaper.
Fifty-five thousand dollars? I can beat that price.
The cost of steel is going to get.
Why, it doesn't have to be steel. There's lots of metal in pink.
And again, these are two different set of lockers. It's just the 51. It's the additional 24 charging lockers that we're purchasing that's going to be used for all the additional personnel that we're hiring. We are, we are so short in lockers, so much so that people have removed, have been removed from their lockers to the point where they're having to store them in their office space.
I do not dispute the requirement for lockers or requirement for locker replacement. I, I just, to me, this seems like an extraordinary, like, public pricing thing where if we were, if you just went to, if any of us went to our house and told somebody we'd like to put in 55 lockers, the guy would probably quote us $5,000. But I, it feels like the, the public sector gravy train is coming in on somebody's contract right now. That, that's, that's, that's the impression I have.
I would just ask, I guess, Chief, I think you said you only, we went with one option. I didn't hear, I don't know. Did you say that you had exhausted several? Because it just, it does seem like a lot of money, especially because it doesn't require public contracting. This is something that is, I'm assuming, right, it's not custom manufactured. This is prefabricated.
No, it's going to come already pre-made, 24 by 24.
It seems pricey to me as well. I don't think we're here to, again, to henpeck. As, as the mayor mentioned, it's just a matter of, we're going to have some significant discussions about our budget. Like later, we're talking about whether or not we can afford an Arts and Cult, Arts and Culture Coordinator, which is what, $150,000 a year, all-in burdened? And we're spending $55,000 on lockers. That's.
And just to note, this is coming from the fee that's already been set aside for the Police Department Fund. That's been there. There's a roughly $215,000 in there for that now, for purchases such as this.
But is that the ERF?
No, it's the Development Impact Fees.
Okay.
That's coming from there. That's been there and it's kind of rolls over year by year. This is definitely made for purchases such as this to basically keep the building up and ready.
Yeah, we used it for the chiller before and then part of it for the range last time on the same funding source.
To that end, I just heard that the range needs upgrades again. I was just touring that the other day. We just spent a lot of money to upgrade the firing range.
The entire building's a little dated, so we do our best to try to keep it up. So, yeah, there's a lot of areas that need improvement.
I, I guess my point is, I, I heard you say earlier you need it for 30 years. I mean, a few years ago, we were contemplating redo, redoing all of City Hall, turning this into a development and moving police and fire. Whether or not that ever happens, 30 years is a long time. We even know if Chevron's going to be here in 30 years. So I think that's.
Just for reference, the lockers that the officers use for their, their. Just for reference, the lockers that the officers use for their their kind of uniforms to change in every day, those are made of steel. They've probably been there for fifty years. They last a very long time.
Chief, may I ask you, what was the dimensions on the lockers that you're talking about? Is it, you said twenty-four by twenty-four?
Twenty-four by twenty-four, yes, and they're deep enough so that officers can store all of their equipment in there.
All right. I mean, I don't want to start more of a conversation on this than we have to, but I mean, if we're, I don't know what metal storage cabinets things are looking at, but Home Depot got six of them that are bigger than that for like two hundred and sixty-five bucks. So I don't I don't know if we were, we have to, because they have to be installed. Do we have to use certain labor force to put them in? Do we have to use a certain company to put them in, or is this us doing it?
So I I had to price this from the.
It does seem a little, the previous company, I get it. I I completely get it. I think you understand that it.
Yeah, I do.
At certain point in time, we have to, like in government, like if you told me four and a half years ago, fifty-five grand, I'd be like, oh, my God. Now I'm looking at it saying, God, we have bigger fish to fry, but the truth is that we have to start looking at everything right now because we have some significant challenges coming up. So this is not a matter of us saying no. It's saying, okay, there probably is a more cost-effective way to get metal cabinets. If it's going down and asking Home Depot to put them in, and we can do that, it's probably gonna be significantly less rather than going to the same company that we've used before. That's just my two cents.
We have not explored Home Depot, and I'm not sure what they're gonna offer. If it's gonna have the same dimensions and what we are looking for to fit in our in our equipment, especially the charging lockers. Those require, again, certain things that we need to make sure that they fit the dimensions of what we need our equipment to.
Charging locker meaning like you gotta for the actual transmitters and transmission and all like that. Okay, so that's a little bit different story.
All of that, yes.
There's no discussion. I'll move approval.
We have a motion from Baldino to approve item thirteen. Does he have a second?
I will second.
Keldor for the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No. The motion passes three to two.
Thank you.
Boils and Pimentel.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. All right. I like to start the day with a stinging defeat. Just kidding, I lost all day. All day. Lost over waffles again. Uh, all right. No public hearings today. Magic. Okay, staff presentation. Item fifteen, modifications to the salary range for a part-time aquatics classifications, including lifeguard trainee, lifeguard, swim instructor, and senior lifeguard. Director Reddick, the floor is yours.
Before we begin, Mr. Mayor, I'll be recusing myself as my son is a lifeguard for the city, so I'll step off.
Wait, wait. No listening, no hand signals. The floor is now yours.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This evening, the item I have for you tonight is modifications to the salary range for all of our part-time seasonal lifeguard aquatics positions. These were restructured and the salary rates were adjusted last May. Last May, instead of going from a regular salary range, we collapsed them to a one pay rate. So with that, the salary survey revealed this year that the median salary rate for the lifeguard position was twenty-two dollars and thirty-three cents. Previously, last year, we increased it to twenty-one dollars, which was one dollar above the minimum fast food wage. So this year, the salary survey reveals it's twenty-two thirty-three for the median, so the proposed range is a dollar increase to the lifeguard classification, and that is really the anchor classifications. The other two that we have are swim instructor and senior lifeguard, so they are placed at ten percent above lifeguard is swim instructor is ten percent above lifeguard and senior lifeguard is ten percent above swim instructor. The increase to the salary ranges from last year really greatly improved the recruitment and also the retention for our lifeguards. And as you know, we are expected to have another pool come online later this year, which will require significant recruitment efforts to staff that pool. So these salary ranges will help us recruit and also retain the current lifeguards that we have. The cost of this item for the remaining three years and this three months in this fiscal year is approximately eleven thousand dollars. That depends on how many hours are worked by the seasonal employees.
Thank you, Director Reddick. We have questions. Very well. I will entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Sorry. It's Drew on the first, Boils on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor, I'll just read the title. A resolution modifying basic hourly salary range for various part-time job classifications has been adopted.
Thank you, city attorney. Thank you, Director Reddick.
Thank you.
Item sixteen, the Els- let's summon the mayor pro tem, sergeant at arms.
Thought he had more time.
Only partway through Wheel of Fortune. All right, the El Segundo Senior Citizens Housing Corporation Board Annual Report and twenty-twenty-five Operating Budget for Park Vista Senior Housing Facility Director Allen. Who will present on this item?
Board member Lany will be presenting.
The member Lany, Paul, welcome. The floor is yours.
That's actually not completely correct. I'm gonna present the State of the Union, and then Michael's gonna address the operating budget. Hope that's okay?
It's not on my form.
Should I leave? I'll make one up. Paul Lany, resident of El Segundo for twenty-four years. Thank you to the city council for having us. I'm the board president of Park Vista for four or five years, on the board of directors for about eight years. Before I begin, I'd like to extend a thank you to city staff, including Elias Sassoon, Paul Chung, Michael Agnes, who's not here, and to the cabinet group, including Neil Cadman and the always helpful Teresa. If you go over to Park Vista, she's the heart and soul of Park Vista. On a day-to-day basis, they're instrumental in ensuring that Park Vista continues to operate smoothly for our cherished seniors. Paul and Elias and Neil were key to putting together this presentation, and they've each blessed it before coming in front before we come in front of you. I'd also like to say thank you to the residents, some of the residents of Park Vista who are here tonight to enjoy this presentation. By the way, I'm I'm presenting on behalf of the board. The board has all looked at it, approved it, and so we move forward. Thank you. I've only got about ninety-three slides, so I hope you don't mind. Sorry, I've not used this before. All right. What we're gonna cover today, I'm gonna whip through a lot of this. Park Vista background, most of you know, senior living facility owned by the city of El Segundo, built in eighty-seven, ninety-seven units. Rents are currently pegged for new rentals at sixty percent of market rate. The cabin group does a survey, I think it's every year, every other year, and we adjust the rates. Again, this is for new people coming in. On average, ten units turn each year, ten in twenty-four. You can see the numbers. Interestingly, approximately eighty-five percent of the ninety-seven units are not even are not paying fifty percent of market rates. So we have people who've been in there for decades who are paying very favorable rates, just we'll put it that way. We've increased rents approximately one to two percent annually over the last fifteen years. Those are for people who are in the facility. We can do that on our own. If we want to increase it more, we can come to you. We have not done so, as I recall. We have worked with Public Works, the cabin group, to push major plumbing projects forward, and we'll talk about that in a second, but a couple million dollars have been pushed forward, some money that has has not, we thought we'd need to spend, we have not needed to spend. There are about ninety percent, ninety people on the waiting list at ten a year. It's got a couple of years there. I'm gonna come back to this comment that I make every year and that I've said to each of you individually. What's the Park Vista charter? Is it affordable, city-sponsored housing, or self-sufficiency? The answer, unfortunately, I've received many years in a row, is yes. The good news, we're financially stable until twenty thirty-one. The bad news, if the city doesn't act now and in ensuing years, Park Vista will likely be deep in the redwood in a decade. I'm also gonna give you my quick spiel that I always say Park Vista is very different from, say, the library. If an elevator goes out at Park Vista, you've got senior citizens who may need to be carried down by the fire department. If a library, the elevator goes out at the library, it's a bummer. It will be fixed, and people will have to figure out another way to go. This is where our family, our friends, cherished relatives, cherished people live, and if things go wrong, that's a big problem. It's not like the internet going down for an hour at a library. We have a couple of challenges. Citywide facility assessment, including Park Vista, was conducted in twenty nineteen. Five point seven million dollars expected to be spent by twenty thirty-five. I've worked closely with Elias and the cabin group, and as I said, a number of those dollars have been pushed forward. We don't believe that it is an up-to-date assessment. Another facility assessment scheduled to be completed in twenty twenty twenty-seven. It is our most important document, other than, you know, CCRs, et cetera. Once we've established what the funds are needed to be spent in the future, we can work back with the budget. So but I'm coming to you tonight with what we know currently. Expenses have gone up dramatically. Just this year, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, unexpected expenses, earthquake insurance and maintenance. In perspective, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in unexpected expenses is one point two months of our total rent. Under current practice and plans, we will stay within or near the city finance recommended reserves until twenty thirty-one and then fall precipitously below recommended reserves. I'm gonna take you through some numbers. Actually, I'm gonna skip forward for a second. I just want to show you this. So this was the, hey, guys, I'm being fancy. This was the facility assessment that was done. Oh, I guess it doesn't work because it's a lit screen. Excellent. This was the facility assessment that was done in twenty nineteen, and it shows line item by line item what work needs to be done or what needs to be covered, and it ranges from plumbing on the third floor, plumbing on the fourth floor, et cetera, and it lays out exactly when the dollars need to be spent. This is the type of assessment that needs to be done, again, for Park Vista, that I'm confident that Elias and his team will develop. Once that's developed, we can then figure out exactly how much money needs to be spent when. So with Paul, we've developed a couple of options, if you will. So the first one is, and I'm not expecting to read all these numbers, but first one assumes a two percent CPI and two hundred K from the city just in twenty twenty-five, and these are from five oh four funds. So I'm not expect, we're not asking the city to take money from something else, but it's from the five oh four funds, which, as you know, are senior housing funds to be used solely for senior housing. I'm gonna just go to a little blow up of this. This is just goes up to twenty thirty-one. If you'll see on the very bottom line, it's the recommended reserves. You're seeing that we're in the hole by one point two million, one point eight million, two point three million, three million, three million, et cetera. That is problematic, and we've had lots of discussions about this with Paul. Taking another assumption, if two percent cost per, cost percentage increase, CPI, that means we can charge two percent more to the current residents, but if the city were to kick in two hundred thousand dollars annually from the five oh four, again, not from any other funds, you'll see that those numbers on the bottom line go down dramatically. In fact, here's a comparison. I just overlay the two of them. So if you do one time two hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna find ourselves in the red in twenty thirty-two, pretty dramatic. If you if the city kicks in two hundred thousand from the five oh four funds, you'll see we don't hit the red until twenty thirty-six, and those numbers are in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, not the millions of dollars. So here's our request. We've established that we are gonna do another assist facility assessment in twenty twenty-seven. Until it is completed in twenty twenty-seven, we ask the city release two hundred thousand dollars per year to Park Vista reserves to help stave off being in the reserve red. Again, we're talking about from the two point two million dollars in the general fund dedicated to senior housing, not taking money away from the police department, not taking it away from elsewhere. Then, financial step two, within ninety days of the delivery of the facility assessment assessment, Public Works, Finance, Community Development, Cabinet Group, and the board will recalibrate our CIP needs and the twenty-year forecast. And then the third step, we will come to you in the subsequent Park Vista State of the Union, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight. The board and the city will turn with changes and further suggestions. So my humble, our humble request is release two hundred thousand dollars a year until this is done from the five oh four funds so that we can ensure that we are building our reserves, and I think this comes down to the whole concept of, you know, compounding interest, et cetera. So that is our ask. I'm glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
Questions for Mr. Lany. Councilor Boils.
I should know this, but have we ever done a market study that looks at other senior housing, not just market rates specifically?
Yeah, the cabinet group has 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 done so. They are doing a bunch of section eight housing, but they believe that we are charging below market even where we are. I'll I'll defer to Neil on that, but I believe that's what he has has stated.
Thank you. Is there any sense, when I was looking at the the financials, some of the expenses seem so erratic, you know, electricity, gardening, laundry, all of these things, we we tend to be, we seem to be consuming about sixty percent of our budget for those individual items, these massive savings. Is there a reason that that we are so far off on our budgets, or is that there was outlier moments with underutilization, and maybe there was just a ton of rain, so we didn't need gardeners or something?
So we're talking about two different things. You're talking about the operating budget.
I'm talking about this is all operating budget.
Okay.
Because we extrapolate much of this, the operating expense, we tend to to be okay, even if very thinly, but that's based on projected expense. But when you look at the the finite numbers in our expenses in twenty-two and twenty-three, we seem to be way overshooting what our actual usage is.
I'm sorry, are you saying that we are?
So we budget, I remember like with gardening, we're off by, you know, by like forty percent, I think. We budgeted ninety.
Over budgeted.
Yeah, we're over budgeting for for a lot of these these consumables.
Yeah. I don't have an answer for you on that. I'd be glad to talk to the cabin group and and come back to you. I was really more concerned with the the long-term.
Yeah, no, I was thinking, but if we have a statistical outlier year, that's one thing. But if those things, if we're continually budgeting the operating budget and we're in better shape than we think we are, and if the ask is two hundred grand a year, but really there's a hundred thousand dollars pocket margin in there we're we're not accounting for, then maybe we only need a hundred thousand dollars out of our five oh four.
My recollection, having been on the board for seven or eight years, is that we typically come very close to the anticipated budget, the operating budget. And Paul, I think you you'd say the same. Paul's been working on the board for about twenty years now, so it all does even out.
Okay.
That's the best answer I can.
No, no, no. Like you say, it's only looking at a twenty-month snapshot, so those things can, those can be some outlier numbers. Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Lany?
Michael, you you have a presentation on this as well? Is that, because I I do have some things I want you to finish first.
Just a verbal, the other sort of normal order of business is every January, the board adopts its calendar year budget, which you saw some of the numbers presented based on a projection over the next couple of decades, but the the city council is now also being asked to sort of ratify the board's adoption of that operating budget. And as a as a reminder, it is outlined in the staff report. As a reminder, the operating income is projected to be approximately nine hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, with operating expenses to be approximately nine hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, which does net a a essentially a positive income for the facility. It is a balanced operational budget, and as I think some of the line of questioning just in a moment, there are there are some variances year to year, and to sort of piggyback off of the chair's comments, every year, they do come relatively close to to matching the expenses, but I I know anecdotally, Neil has mentioned when he's presented the budget, they tend to budget conservatively, not knowing what, you know, what some things might might come up. For example, I think two years ago, laundry machines needed to replace be replaced. That was an unexpected cost, and things like that happen. Turnover of units, they they base it on an average, but this year, there was probably two or three times the turnover than they they normally saw in previous years, and so they do try their best to make, you know, accurate projections, but even even so, they still come pretty close. But in the last several years, we've been operating in the positive.
I got a question, a couple of line items. Looks like we're spending between cable, TV, and telephone, internet, nine thousand a month, which is like ninety dollars per resident per month. Are we paying for cable in every room and TV and internet in every room, or what's the deal there?
Yeah, the chair's gonna probably have to help me remember. The last year, the board negotiated a new deal with time with spectrum? Where previously the tenants were fronting the costs for a portion of their of their services, of their internet services. The city obtained a bundle deal where we do front the cost. It's built into the the leasing, and we were able to achieve, I think it was a fifty-dollar savings per person.
But are we getting reimbursed? I'm just trying to figure out if that's included in the rent. We're not getting reimbursed by the tenant.
It's all included in the rent, but it's less than what we were paying previously.
Fair enough. Same thing with electricity?
There's four, four or five lines, traditional phone lines in the building as well, we have to pay for in the elevators.
That that part I get. But electricity, they're paying for their own electricity and water, right? Or no, we're paying for water and they're paying for power?
It's a pass-through cost, essentially. We're we pay. We're, we pay.
The reason I'm asking these questions is when we do this survey and we're looking at market rates, are we really looking at comparable units in the sense that powers, I mean, not power, but cable, internet, all those things are included? I mean, that's, what we're paying for cable and internet per resident is $166 a month per resident, which seems, strikes me as a lot of money. And I think there's opportunity there. But also, if we're going to evaluate ourselves against comparable units, we should make sure it's like, like versus like.
Agreed. I wish Neil were here to, to speak on it. He's the best subject matter expert in, in that. But in the presentations that Neil has provided to the board in the last couple of years that, that we've served as a liaison, he has pointed out, and I will attest, that finding comparable facilities that, which is a city-owned senior housing facility is, is very, very difficult. There are, there are none to, to compare us to. And so we have to do our best in finding private market. And as the chair pointed out, the section eight housing that, that Neil Cadman's group manages in Long Beach, we have to find the closest comparables as, as possible. But taking some of those things into, into consideration are certainly part of that equation, or should be part of that equation.
What is the city spending its 504 funds on if not Park Vista?
We currently don't spend any 504 funds, other than if something were to happen at Park Vista.
Okay. This is going to be an unpopular opinion, but I'm going to throw it out there anyway. So I'm just going to preface that. Number one, I, I, you know, Paul, first of all, you, you make a great presentation. I've seen versions of this the past three, four years. It's very, very thorough. It's very easy to understand, and I appreciate it. And one of the common themes throughout has always been about the mounting capital improvement projects, pushing them down the road and things like that. So, you know, the, the fact is that the city is not a great landlord. We are, we are not built. We don't have the infrastructure or the expertise to be owning and operating properties. I understand that we own and not own this one. We're not great property managers. That's why we hire someone to do that. We're third-partying it out. We do not have the staff or resources to adequately, adequately plan for what the management and operations costs are going to be into the future on this. That's, that's what I'm getting from these presentations. Also, due to the, the cost of the upkeeps and the things that have to be done, have to be done at prevailing wage because we own the building. So they're 40% more than they would be if it was a privately-held company or privately-held business. You know, the residents, honestly, of, of Park Vista deserve better than that. It's, what we're doing essentially is we're, we're putting a Band-Aid on a, on a big giant problem because we don't necessarily have the resources to be able to plan for what is going to be needed down the road. Just look at the capital improvement projects we have in the city that, that cost, you know, we're about, we've got $130 million worth of capital improvement projects. So my feeling is, is that I, I do believe it's time to at least look at what the options would be for, to either to sell or to look into what it would be for a private company that specializes in senior living. With carve-outs to making sure the current residents are protected, the list is protected. But, and additionally, you know, from that, I, I think the, the outcome of that would be, number one, the seniors would have, that are living there are going to have a better facility as it goes forward. You'll be able to make all these improvements or improvements that need to be done on a more cost-effective basis and quicker. The additional benefit to us as a city may be that proceeds from the sale of that, I don't know what they would be, I have no idea what the building would cost, is valued at, could then be put into our affordable housing fund that we have right now that has $5 million in it. Maybe it doubles to 10 million, and then we're able to take that money and be able to incentivize builders to have more affordable housing throughout the, the city. So I think it could potentially be a win-win situation. But I do believe, based on the, what I'm seeing, that it's time to, at the very least, start to look at what is possible or what our options are.
So respectfully, I, I agree with some of what you said and disagree as well. The cost of management of the building, excuse me, the cost of management of the building, we're paying less than market rate for the cabinet group to, to do the work. Yes, the 40% markup for the work that's done is, or more, is pretty dramatic. The question I would have is, for those who are living there now, if the unit, if the building were to sell, what guarantees would they have that a capital improvement plan, such as we're going to see in 2027, would actually be enacted? I'm, I have a, I have a concern that if it's sold to a private party, are they going to do that?
There's, there's no guarantee that the plan you'll see in 2027 is something we can afford to actually do. That's the truth of that. And that's what I'm saying. My, my point is that I, I know, based on what I see up here in the future, there's going to be another council up here at that time. There's going to, and by the time you get 10 years in the future, there's going to be three, four more councils. So we could choose to kick this down the road and let someone else deal with it. Or we at least understand what our options are. It might come back that the options are not good. We do want to protect the people. Yeah, we don't want to sit there and have the people that are living there, we sell it, and all of a sudden it, it blows up. No, we don't want to do anything like that. I would, I do believe, though, based on what I'm seeing, that we do need to start looking at what an actual long-term solution would be.
And that is why I said I respectfully agree. I, I think it would, it would behoove us to do that. My question is, how do we build in protections down the road should the, if, should the building be sold?
Right. And those are the things we'd have to learn. And that's why, I know, Michael, as you mentioned, a, a property and, and facility assessment that, you know, needs to be done, maybe, maybe we move that up. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I have to obviously get consensus from everybody here, but that's just an idea I have to, to address this on a more permanent basis going forward.
If I may, there's three courses of action here in front of us. First, do we have consensus to receive and file the report?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I won one. On the discuss other actions related to the item, Councilmember Giroux, do you have a motion to, can we do this? City attorney, you can, a motion to study that course of action?
I think it's within the, the ambit of what you're talking about tonight.
Do we want to talk about it more, or should I just go for it? Well, I don't think we really have a lot of information on it. But if you wanted to say, hey, I want to put this on the agenda in the future.
I would like to.
Or commission at least a, a staff report.
Yes. So I don't know exactly how you meant to word that. Can we take everything I just said over the last 10 minutes and kind of put a, I wish this to happen?
You, you, you would like to, if I'm going to put words in your mouth, to, you'd like to direct staff to study a full privatization of Park Vista?
Can I make one suggestion? We're about to go into budgeting, and we're not resetting our entire strategic plan, but we've already committed staff to strategic priorities for like the next two or three years. Should we not take up Councilmember Giroux's idea as part of the budgeting session? Because this is going to be a pretty significant undertaking in terms of expenses and time, I would imagine.
Oh.
No?
You mean staff time to look into that? Is that what you're thinking?
That's what I typically, city manager would do, I think, Mr. Allen, but I defer staff.
Yeah. In terms of the strategic plan, we can certainly include that. I mean, we haven't actually scheduled the strategic plan yet, but I think we could, we as staff could certainly come back with a, an analysis of privatization as a standalone effort. If, that could probably happen sooner than the strategic plan.
Michael, what do you think?
Yeah, just to, to build off of what Daryl's mentioning, I want to remind the, the council that as part of the affordable housing strategic plan, prior to Councilmember Keldorf being on the council, but even while you were on the planning commission, this was reviewed by the planning commission. The council established several priorities. There was no timeframe, but, but looking at Park Vista from several angles of use and future was one of those items in the affordable housing strategic plan, specific to identifying and preserving and protecting senior affordable housing, but also including the range of privatization of the facility or locking in the affordability rates for RENA purposes. There was a, a menu of items. And so it's something that's been on our radar. We have not allocated time to it yet, but, but it is something in the strategic plan that was a, essentially a three- to five-year build-out. And so we've, we've tackled a couple of those items in the strategic plan. There's a consultant on board, and that, that could very easily be the next thing that they tackle.
Something I'm looking at, I'm, sorry, go ahead. Is that it's a, a motion to, to study or to direct staff to study the, what the privatization of Park Vista and what those options would be? This way, it's a standalone item, and it's either going to be something that we look at and we like, or we don't.
Okay, so yeah, so point taken, Director Allen, that there's a larger plan. Councilmember Giroux would like to see something smaller, more, more finite, on, more concise on this, and a newer time. So counsel, I would say, without a value judgment on whether or not you are likely to vote yea or nay, are we okay with the study? I mean, he could, he has the free to put anything he wants on the agenda, but are we okay with, with this study, we board? Okay, I think everyone is okay with general consensus?
Yeah.
Again, without a value judgment on whether we'd say yea or nay?
I would, I would like the thumbnail sketch, don't.
Yeah.
Spin your wheels.
Okay, it doesn't have to be exhausting.
You, you want a 10,000-foot view of what this would look like.
All right, so.
Again, I, I, I hope we have consensus that if we were to choose this route, there would be protections to those that we've made a promise to.
Hundred percent.
And so in the back of my mind, although I'm, I always have an open mind up here, someone buying a place where 85% is 50% below market rate, I just, but I'm, I'm happy to hear a presentation on it.
That's right. We, we can all learn.
Can all look forward to it.
I mean, you guys just bought $50,000 lockers.
Think it was 55.
So if the bad idea, if the bad idea fairy is spreading magic dust around. Okay, but we do have a budget to approve. Are there any further questions on the budget for Park Vista?
Only if we approve that budget, are we approving the recommendation to start putting in 200,000 to kind of build up the reserves so that, until we get through that assessment as requested?
Yeah, I believe that is a, that is a separate recommendation and likely something we would take up in the budget. That would come through in budgeting, not on approving this budget. Am I correct on that? We would do that in our budgeting meeting, which May 5th is the first meeting on.
Yes, May 5th.
May 5th.
And may I remind the council that it's $200,000 per year from the existing 504 funds, which are only.
Which are only for this item, right? We would be, we would be paying ourselves forward.
Only for senior housing. It might be for other items, but today, it's the only item.
That's right. Inconceivably in the budget thing, we'll see how much money, how much that's making in the 504 now.
Yes.
And if it actually makes sense to put it in, to effectively move it to defray a cost, or if it makes more to, to let it accrue interest where it is. Paul, I see you nodding your head. I feel much happier about saying it now that I see that. Do we have a motion to approve the budget? Mr.?
One of the biggest line items is management fee. And I know Cabinet Group's done a great job for many years. When was the last time we bid that out or reviewed that contract?
I don't recall. I do know that the management fee has gone up in the last few years, but by small percentages, not dramatic.
And if I'm wrong, that's a flat fee within an hourly piece tied on, because that's what, that's the only way to explain it's incredibly variable.
That's right.
Like, they were $36,000 under on their management budget in 2023, I think.
I think it's different. Like, if you just compared this to a normal management fee, you would say, wow, it's 20% of the operating budget. That's high. Normally, it's 3% to 5%. But, but I would just add, sorry, that this, to the mayor's point, does include some hourly components, namely Teresa, who you already, I don't know if there are other people that are included in terms of total comp under that line item. And I know it's, Park Vista is different than, you know, typical management. You have to have someone there, or you should have someone there on site. But I just think, you know, good governance is going out and reviewing contracts on a regular basis and getting new pricing and not just accepting something that's working because it's working.
I, I fully agree with you. And if the city wishes to review that contract, I, I would agree with it. I might point out that a very significant portion of the dollars that are spent in labor at Park Vista, managed by Cabinet Group, is for refurbishment of the units. So you, you might look at the total labor and go, holy cow, this is really expensive.
But that shouldn't be under management fees.
No, it is, it is separate, but there's.
Okay.
My point is that if you lump, mistakenly lump the two together, it's a very high number. But the Cabinet Group has consistently managed the property and not dramatically increased, or for that matter, increased the percentages over year, over year, very much. But I would encourage.
Actually, a question for probably the CFO. I mean, do we have a set policy as a city where we review contracts that are significant in size on a regular basis?
Well, I know, I can have Paul refer his response to this also, but I know on some of our bigger contracts, yes, every three years, we do try and look to rebidding those out.
I think this should be no different. We should be consistent. This is one of our most important assets, as you, as you've already stated, as I know firsthand, because my mother happens to live there. It took her three years to get into that property. See a couple of residents back there. Thank you for being here. But I think we should, we should look at that.
Does she currently live there?
Yes, she does. He disclosed it. Yeah. I don't have to recuse myself, but thank you for inquiring. Mr. Hensley, do you feel differently?
Karnak?
You're not paying her rent or financially responsible for it?
Absolutely not. I've spoken in years.
Just, just to, to move this along, I, I, as a former liaison to Park Vista and having seen the Cabinet Group, the amount of institutional knowledge and memory that they have about, well, that idea you have, we'd actually tried that four years ago, and this is why it didn't work. I, I was there when he negotiated Spectrum, and that was because you had residents paying vastly different rates for internet and TV, and by bundling it in, they got both for less. When it came to the statutory requirement to check all of your decks, that came through the state law, the bids that we got originally for Park Vista were 40-some thousand dollars, and he was able to find a city inspector, I think out of Long Beach, who charged maybe $500 for the same. I mean, it was dramatically different. So while I appreciate the diligence required to keep an eye on these things, I am also appreciative of the value the Cabinet Group has brought to help maintain and refurbish this, I mean, 1980s, you know, that's an old facility, and it's, it's, it's doing a pretty good job. So, so thank you, Paul, and Tim, thank you, Mr. Allen, thank you for what you do on Park Vista.
Just so we're clear, Councilman Baldino, I agree. I think I stated that. Paul, they do a great job. I was also the liaison for Park Vista, so I, I understand too firsthand. I'm just suggesting it's good governance to review contracts of significant size on a regular basis, that's all.
I think we just approved their contract again a couple of years ago. Like, I think it does, it does, but it is, does come up on the calendar.
And the one thing I would say about, I completely agree. I think that 20% looks misleading because there, we could use a more detailed operating expense budget. There's admin personnel that's rolling up into that, so I don't think it's actually 20%. But I, I do agree.
With that said, would anyone like to move approval of the budget?
Sure, Baldino, so moved.
Second. Giroux on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Five-oh?
Just to clarify, and on financial step one, was there a decision there?
What's that? That, we'll review that with the budget on May 5th.
Okay. And I'll note that the suggestion or the discussion of that has already been cleared through the city's finance, so.
That's right. Your recommendation is option two, the course of action two.
Option, yes. Actually, all I'm asking for right now, all we are asking for right now, is that until the next assessment is finalized, that the city contributes $200,000 from the 504 funds to Park Vista to ensure that in the future, we stay out of the red.
That's right. Which is option two. You had two things listed.
Yes, yes. But again, I'm, we are only asking for until the study is done. Once the study is done, we came, may come back and say, oh my gosh, we don't have to nearly do as much as we thought. We don't need the two hundred thousand dollars in the future. So until it's done, I'm asking the city contributes the two hundred thousand dollars.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time too, Mr. Lenny. All right, item seventeen. The El Segundo Cultural Arts Master Plan. Director Mancini.
Hello there, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight I am pleased to be alongside members of the city's Arts and Culture Committee to be presenting to the City Council a cultural arts master plan that will provide a strategic roadmap for implementing key initiatives of the city's cultural arts program. In two thousand and twenty-four, at the request of the City Council, staff began a comprehensive review of the CDP. After several months of research, discussion with the Arts Committee, several staff members and consultants, our former, former cultural arts coordinator Randy Neeson drafted a cultural arts master plan. The plan is designed to establish a clear vision for the city's cultural arts division, including a comprehensive programming plan for public art and public art program, programming for the next several years. So tonight I am pleased to introduce the Chair of the ACC, John Pickhaver, who will um, provide a report.
Let me, let me disclose that John and I had a iced tea to discuss the presentation after, uh, what was that, Thursday?
Yes, and let the record show, it was a Arnold Pom.
Arnold Pom, thank you.
Had lemonade in it as well.
Ex parte, ex parte conversation has been disclosed, Madam Clark?
But uh, opening things up for us is actually going to be one of our newer members, uh, Jason Halfley. So he'll, he'll take our first two slides.
Jason jumping in. He's been there, he's been there two weeks.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro-Ten, City Council members, fellow community leaders. Uh, yes, my name is Jason Halfley and I'm one of the newer members serving on the Arts and Culture Committee. Since it's April, this wasn't part of my planned remarks, but it is April Fool's Day, so I could just come in here and say, we want to amend the ordinance, we want to lower the project thresholds, we want to apply it to multi-unit residential projects. And like some other cities, uh, to our own city's capital improvement projects, but we, we're not doing that. Uh, I'd actually like to start off by saying El Segundo is awesome, it's a very special place. In my opinion, it's one of the best places in the country to live, to work and to visit. And we've earned that reputation through thoughtful leadership, our uh, strong business climate, safe neighborhoods, excellent schools and a genuine small town vibe. And we really have like an unmatched sense of community. And do a great job of blending innovation and industry with our family-friendly neighborhoods, strong values and a lifestyle that all taken together really is our culture. It's that culture that gives us our identity and our city its soul. Especially in a massive metropolitan region like Los Angeles, that's what really sets us apart. A commitment to cultivating that is what will continue attracting the best people, companies and opportunities. Speaking of companies, you may also know that I serve currently as Chair of the Board of the El Segundo Chamber of Commerce. So I too understand and value the importance of being business friendly. Uh, the long list of reasons why businesses want to be here is just that, it's a long list. We've become quite a prestigious zip code. But we know that businesses want to be in communities where employees want to live, where there's culture and there's pride and purpose. It's a little bit on culture, but on art, I feel some, sometimes view it as an extra. But to me, art is not the icing on the cake, it's fundamental. It's how we as humans express ourselves, how we tell our stories. Across history and geography too, whenever a community is really thriving, when it's safe, stable and successful, what follows is often an explosion of creativity. So art becomes a signal, it's a sign that a community is healthy, confident, connected, like I said, thriving. So we are presenting a plan tonight. Uh, it's a roadmap, yes, but it's also a vision. Uh, it builds on success that we've already seen and it offers some ways to improve. We want to add more structure, more transparency, accounting and accountability, better communication and clearer roles. Certainly it's about continuing to create moments that bring people together, but also about making sure everyone knows how those moments happen. Because many of us love uh, the murals, the family events, certainly the concerts in the park. A story I tell to some of my friends in other states is how cool it is to actually go to the summer concert series. I've seen families with four generations on blankets and chairs there enjoying that moment. And the Art Walk, the Art Walk's uh, become a tremendous event that's loved by our community as well. But all of these things that help make this place come alive uh, are awesome, but many residents don't realize that those experiences are made possible in whole or in part by uh, contributions of local corporations and developers. So one of the biggest opportunities we see is to raise awareness and recognition for those contributors. Uh, it's a major focus of the plan. We're also aware that, uh, especially for our smaller businesses, mom and pop shops, retail locations on Main Street, restaurants, et cetera. The events and public programming that have been made possible through this cultural development program have already brought real value in the form of visibility, vibrancy and foot traffic. So we worked really hard to come up with what we believe are right fit recommendations for our city. Uh, for the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, our goal was never to just maximize art spending. It is important to note that as far as one percent for the art programs go in our region, we already have one of the most business-friendly versions. Again, other cities do apply arts fees to lower project thresholds, to multi-unit residential developments and even to their own capital improvement projects, which I do not understand and we are not recommending to go that route. However, uh, we do think there's some opportunity too, to explore other ways to fund this program in addition to this one percent fee. We should be exploring ways to diversify that funding, looking into grants, mechanisms that allow elective contributions by organizations and individuals, other fundraising things, et cetera, things that, that'll bring additional stability and sustainability to this program. Uh, I hope you'll find our recommendations thoughtful and balanced, it certainly was our intention. The other really important thing, I know people have brought it up tonight and it's part of the discussion, but I think this is super important, that none of this works without people, uh, without infrastructure. The recreation parks and library department uh, certainly does amazing work, but I know there's limited bandwidth there. And if the city is serious about this plan and we believe in continuing to build our arts and culture ecosystem, I think we need that dedicated staff person to manage it, someone to build the partnerships, oversee projects, ensure quality and create frictionless experiences for these developers and businesses. So that role in my opinion is, is essential, not really optional. And, and honestly, I, we, we don't really make a recommendation within the plan to fill that role. We just kind of assumed that that role is needed. Finally, um, we got a lot of awesome stuff coming our way here in Los Angeles. Uh, major international events like the World Cup, the Super Bowl, the Olympics, all coming to Los Angeles. Where we're positioned here in El Segundo kind of as a gateway to the LA region. I think we have a real opportunity to stand out and further elevate ourselves on this world map. Uh, but that certainly won't happen by accident, takes intention, a bit of investment and a little bit of vision. And um, we're excited to share that vision with you tonight. With that, I'll hand it back off to John, who'll go through some of the specifics of the plan, thank you.
All right, thank you, Jason, and good evening again, Council. Uh, let's see, I've never used this either, but I think it should be pretty simple, although it's already not working, where do I? Okay, all right. So today, this is in April, it's not an April Fool's joke either, it's uh, Arts and Culture Creativity Month here in the state of California. So it's very fitting that I think we had one, two, three, six items on the agenda uh, related to the Arts and Culture Committee here. So we're, we're kicking things off right for Arts and Culture Creativity Month. I also want to thank all the members of the ACC that are here tonight. Jason, Joan, Michelle, Brian, Nicole, Elizabeth. Uh, I know Jane is watching from Palm Springs, who's actually attending Desert X Festival, so. Hello Jane or hello Jane, not sure what camera is on. But Jason kind of gave the high level thoughts and like he said, I'm going to go through uh, some more specifics. So we had a uh, strategic planning session when we were drafting this plan initially and we came up with a vision, a mission and a purpose. Our vision is, we want to be an internationally recognized arts destination where creative ideas take off. You may recognize that slogan of, of the city where big ideas take off. We see a partnership uh, and a theme of connectivity there. Our mission is to be very collaborative, to engage civic business and artistic partners in delivering captivating programs and public art. And the purpose of this plan is a framework for delivering arts and culture experiences in El Segundo. So as Jason said, this arrives at a pivotal moment right now. With the Olympics coming, the World Cup, the Super Bowl, it's really a time to take advantage of the arts infrastructure we have here and capitalize on it. You know, the plan, it, it outlines our strategic vision to expand programming, forge creative partnerships and really to use the arts to not only drive community pride, pride, but economic vitality. And again, with all these world events coming up, you know, will we be ready when the world shows up? And we think this plan puts us in a great position to really capitalize on that. So you have the master plan in front of you, this uh, presentation kind of breaks down what, at one point was an eighteen-page document, but we got it to a lean twelve-page, more like ten if you take out the table of contents. So I hope you got a chance to look through it, but this presentation kind of gives some higher level, uh, you know, points from it. So as I was saying, arts and culture are a proven economic driver, fueling investment, increasing property values, attracting businesses and generating revenue through tourism and local spending. Uh, in this report from Otis College in twenty twenty-three, five hundred and seven billion dollars of California's economy came from creative arts. So there's just a ton of opportunity here that we really think we can take even more advantage of. So arts and culture is an economic driver, it fuels investment, increases property values, tracks business. It generates revenue through tourism and local spending, like I said. Now, we believe this aligns with many goals in the city's strategic plan, which we will bring up throughout the presentation. And this first one comes up here with strategic plan goal one, strategy A, leveraging arts and culture to activate and enhance city-owned spaces. Again, we believe that the infrastructure is here. So here are some examples from different cities, how they really take advantage of the arts to just generate economic activity and vitality in their own cities. We have Santa Monica who has repurposed old establishments to generate foot traffic. Culver City, uh, you know, with Amazon and HBO going there, they've just developed this whole arts district, a new community. I, I used to work in that area on the Sony lot when it was, across the street was Culver Studios and place was kind of a dump and it's just a whole new area there. And uh, you know, opening day was, was last weekend and there's the Shoeless Joe Field of Dreams quote, if you build it, he will come, often misattributed as they will come, but if you build it, he will come. And I think if we take advantage again of what we have here, more businesses, more creative businesses, more innovative businesses will be, want to be a part of El Segundo. That's something we're always looking to bring in, but I don't think we recognize the potential of arts and culture to be that, uh, that lure for a lot of these corporations we're trying to get to do business here. Now, El Segundo is no stranger to arts and innovation itself, we're, we're getting there. In twenty twenty-three, we partnered with Snap, Snapchat, as a lot of people know it by, to launch an immersive public art experience. This was done through the Art Walk, which Jason talked about, one of our most highly attended events uh, in the city. Uh, this came up with eleven interactive public art pieces using augmented reality on Snapchat. I know not everybody uses Snapchat, but this is uh, directed to eventually be off Snap. So basically, you could open your camera at certain pieces of art in the city and just experience it in a totally different immersive way. A great example of this um, is NBC Suites, who held a kickoff event for the Art Walk uh, last year. It also doubled as an unveiling of their recent contribution to the Arts One Percent Fund, where their, behind their lobby uh, was this beautiful mosaic, also included a lot of the blue butterflies, which was discussed tonight, and you just point your phone at it and it just, it comes to life. It's really cutting-edge stuff that with one of the, you know, major companies in the country we're, we're partnering with. And uh, there's this great, great quote that I uh, came across while putting together this presentation that I, I really agree with. "El Segundo has long been a birthplace of innovation, including the creation of GPS, rockets, amazing toys and so much more. This innovation starts with an idea, often sparked by some form of art. We look forward to seeing augmented reality and potentially re-energizing, re-energizing public art in El Segundo." If that quote sounds familiar, that was Councilmember Drew Boils, then mayor in twenty twenty-three uh, in a press release at the event. So now we're going to go to the focusing on arts and culture in El Segundo. So the master plan, we discuss access to arts and culture, investment in community, capacity of the arts sector and commitment to arts and sustainability. The plan goes into these in detail, I've pulled out uh, some kind of high-level items to discuss for this presentation. So in El Segundo in recent years, we've lost a lot of our cultural touchstones. Esmoa, uh, most recently the Zimmerman Automobile Driving Museum. It's, it's all left a noticeable void and an underscoring the urgent need to invest and expand local cultural opportunities. Creative investment, it complements broader livability goals, especially as younger generations seek walkable, work-live communities. For me, I walked here from my, my apartment, I will walk home. El Segundo is just, it's just a beautiful community and that downtown section where I walked through, just, it, it thrives now and we could just capitalize on that by just doubling down on our investment in, in arts and culture. Commitment to sustainability of the arts, to strengthen resilience and impact, the city should diversify revenue streams and pursue long-term partnerships that support cultural growth. So the whole idea here is to reframe this, you know, don't see the Cultural Development Fund as, as a liability, but really see it as an opportunity where we can just become an economic powerhouse in arts and culture and really just increase our economic advantage in South Bay. So the plan now, we're going to go through the major goals of the plan, of which there are four. Goal one, establish lasting cultural legacy for El Segundo and position the city as a premier arts destination. So for each of these goals, we've come up with a key indicator of success and we tried to match it with the city's strategic plan. So we see ourselves on the road to achieving goal number one if we can see El Segundo receiving consistent media attention and data demonstrating enhanced tourism through its cultural development program. At the start of this presentation, I asked, are we going to be ready when the world shows up? For the Olympics, for the Super Bowl, for uh, what's next, uh, the World Cup? All those events, they're opportunities. And as Jason mentioned, you know, people just landing at LAX, El Segundo is really a gateway to LA County. So even separate from those events, we can be a destination that is just driving economic activity in town through arts and culture. And we point out that advancing arts, excuse me, advancing public art and community programming that reflects El Segundo's identity while promoting diversity, inclusion and equitable access is aligned with strategic goal three, strategy B, to foster an inclusive and connected community. The next goal we have is arts and culture spark investment in El Segundo. So the key indicator here is data that shows that the cultural development program is a motivator for business choosing to operate in or partner with our city. We want to use arts and culture as a business development tool to attract companies, strengthen partnerships and support creative industry growth. We believe this supports strategic goal plan five, strategy C, to attract, retain and grow businesses. Goal three. Arts and culture is stable, fiscally sustainable and well-resourced. Cultural arts operates with reliable funding and delivers consistent, high-impact programming. We need to have, have buy-in from, from the City Council. As passionate as we are on the Arts and Culture Committee and all these ideas we have, it, it really doesn't go much beyond that basement, community room in the library if there isn't that buy-in from the council. So to ensure long-term sustainability, we need to diversify funding, retain qualified staff and establish shared stewardship. We believe this advances strategic goal four, strategy A, recruit and retain top-quality staff. And goal three, strategy A, deliver unparalleled, unparalleled city services. And goal four, develop a standardized approach to identify and fund cultural arts initiatives. Here the key indicator is El Segundo is recognized for the quality, consistency and impact of its public art and cultural programs. We want to standardize processes, clarify policy and integrate cultural arts into city communications, fulfilling strategic goal plan, excuse me, strategic goal three, strategy A, to educate and inform the public about city programmings. We, there's one member who is just always uh, clamoring for an Instagram account for the Arts and Culture Committee. And while that would get the job done, I think, but uh, at a higher level, just making sure the work that we're doing in that room is, is broadcasted to the city, you know, not to give us credit, but that, so people know that these events are out there that they can attend. So people know that it is our business community that really makes this uh, possible through their contributions to the fund. Next we have optimizing the one percent ordinance. So uh, recently, I think, I'm not sure if it officially happened today with the second ordinance, I forget how that works, but we changed the ordinance, uh, there was a recommendation that I think council, there was consensus on. Currently, what businesses can do is they can put one percent, pay a one percent in Luffy or put one percent of the project value up to two million dollars um, of art on site. We had this change where now they could do some art on site and put the rest in the fund. This is a great example of how we can make the fund more sustainable. And we want to find ways, like Jason was saying, to grow contributions so we can improve staffing stability, again, supporting strategic goal four, strategy A, to recruit and retain top-quality staff. So if we had a, a staff member that could apply, use his or her expertise to apply for grant funding, to host fundraising events. use his or her expertise to apply for grant funding, to host fundraising events, the liability of that staff salary is then, is accounted for with these grant fundings, with these fundraisers, with creating the ability for people to contribute to the fund, people, organizations, or businesses to contribute outside of the 1% for the arts program. And having a subject matter expert in there, like other cities do, who do these things and do them well and achieve them and make their funds sustainable, really will position El Segundo's cultural development fund and program to be sustainable. So we have some objectives and indicators of an incentive strategy that we think will further optimize this. So that's streamlining approvals. Everybody wants faster permitting. Recognition is a big thing that we really want to do as a committee, recognizing the contributions that businesses make. And I alluded to NBC Suites earlier. That wasn't just an unveiling and an Art Walk kickoff. All businesses that had contributed to the 1% Fund were invited there, and they were celebrated for their contributions. But we want to take that a step further. So yes, we want to continue to honor them annually. But we want to take opportunities to unveil their new art. Or if their contribution could be earmarked for a specific program, make sure they're credited there. And, you know, had an unveiling on their campus. We love ribbon cuttings in El Segundo. So I foresee a lot more of those happening and just really championing that contribution from our business partners and letting them know that they are valued and showing them where their dollars went. And that gets into the last point of just collaboration, engage developers in cultural planning and shared promotional efforts. So it's not just saying, hey, here's what we did. It's also saying, what would you like to do? How can we work together to execute something? You know, some people might just, some businesses might want to just pay the fee, and they're done with it. But we have a lot of creative industry here who probably would get pretty excited about the idea of, you know, not just writing a check and, you know, sending it away, but actually being a part of the process. And we want to include their involvement in it more. And that kind of leads in nicely to partnerships and community support. So we want to partner with local organizations, businesses, residents that have fueled cultural successes. We believe that, you know, strengthening these collaborations will just amplify impact and further embed arts and culture into our civic life and cultural identity here in El Segundo. And in this next slide, we have some examples of that. The El Segundo Art Walk, which has been mentioned a few times tonight, is really just a great event. I think a lot of people think that's just an event that the city puts on. But no, it's residents, two residents and their team that bring this event to the city with the support of the Cultural Development Fund. And it's just an example of one of our best partnerships. In recent years, we introduced some small community grants. This has helped put on things like the Juneteenth Festival in El Segundo that Black and Mayberry puts on by contributing to the fees that are owed to performers. We had our first, what was called Gundo Pride last year. It wasn't the first Pride event in town, but it was the first large-scale one that also relied on some fees from these community grants. And we have bigger ideas as well. We want to see a film and music festival in El Segundo. And all these things start small, and they grow. And we think if, again, we have that buy-in, if we have that support, if we have that staff, we can really take the arts and culture experience to the next level here in El Segundo. So that brings me to the last slide. Again, this is included in the master plan of just recommendations. I'll just go through these really quickly for the benefit of the public. So we would update and revise the Cultural Arts Administrative Guidelines to streamline processes for city-led public art commissions and artist selection. We would direct the arts and culture coordinator to seek grant funding for public art and programming, as well as to develop a plan for fundraising opportunities to generate additional revenue sources. Again, we don't see this position as a luxury. We see it as infrastructure to really execute everything you've heard tonight. Number three, expand and enhance communication through websites, social media, and city communications to better inform residents, employees, and visitors regarding programs and initiatives through the Cultural Development Fund. Number four, develop key performance indicators for measuring program outcomings, including impact on property values, retail spending, and ability to attract top-tier companies. So that is, you know, a big undertaking. But, you know, I mentioned at the start of this that, how much was it? Seven, six hundred, $500 billion in the California economy came from arts and cultures? Arts and culture, there is a way to measure this stuff, and we want to show that the value is being felt here. And finally, like Jason alluded to, we really want to document, disseminate program findings and success, demonstrating El Segundo's leadership in city-business-cultural partnerships. So we will be presenting our budget later, but that is a high-level look at our master plan, and we're happy to take questions on it.
Thank you, Chair P. Kaver. Questions from the dais?
Please, somebody else.
I love the presentation, you put a lot of work into it, it's great. It would be nice to have a few things added to. We talk about metrics, but I don't see any clear metrics on there. And when I think about the Art Walk, the way in which the city was able to get behind the Art Walk five, six years ago, whenever that was first presented by George Renfro and John McCullough and others, was because we could measure it. And one of the things we ask is, well, if it's going to be, I don't know, $15,000, $20,000 that first year, what are we going to get in return? And you talk a lot about economic benefit in your deck, which is great. What is the return on that investment? And it was very clear to us that the Art Walk was going to more than pay for itself in that 15, 20, 30, 35, whatever we're spending by way of getting people to the city, the impressions that we're going to get, all these different media channels, but then the experience people get in El Segundo. And one of the first things we asked them to do, John and George, is year two or three, measure the number of people that came from outside of town. And now we can get that information for POS data if we collaborate with our merchants. But that makes sense in my mind, that is a good use of funds. It's easier to justify from my standpoint, because the city is benefiting, which, again, you spent a lot of time talking about the benefit. I'm familiar with those Otis reports, Creative Economy, I've looked at those for years. I would like to see a couple of things added. You talk about grant dollars raised, I think that's a great use of a community, arts and culture, I should say, coordinator. I also think outside funds, outside for the one, outside of the 1% for the arts is a great use, raising those. But I'd like to see a metric on that, what is the goal? What are we trying to achieve? If the person makes $150,000 a year, is it reasonable to expect him or her to get 25% raised in grant dollars, 25% in outside sources? So some metrics around that. And then the final one is just, how do we measure the benefit? So the spend divided by the number of beneficiaries, some estimate of that. But that, again, it's, we put up a mural, we can make some determination about how many people are going to see that in a day, and who's benefiting, and what it costs us, et cetera. We do an event, it's a little bit different, like a one-time event. So I would just like to see some thought put around those metrics. But otherwise, I think you put a lot of good work into that with your committee. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Boils.
I mean, I really don't have any questions. I have greatly enjoyed, I've now attended two meetings. I think there have been three since I was appointed as the liaison. And I have to say, I have learned something I thought I knew a little bit about, I realized I knew very little about. And I very much appreciate the work that this committee takes on. I have to say, I was candidly very surprised how many people are coming from the business community. I feel like it's something that keeps being reiterated. And maybe that's because that was some new information from me, and I appreciate you all educating me on that. I think we'll get some more questions in the budget section, but I really enjoyed this. I agree with metrics, having that be included, because I think that that's something we love to see, you know, the benefit. There was, and when we talk about these events, and that will come up too, we even talked about during the Little League World Series, how much local businesses made above and beyond what they normally would during that period of time. And that's awesome, because that's tangible and something that we can really, you know, put our, put our name behind. So I agree, I think that would be great. The only question I have, and this is the first time I've seen it too, you talk about expedited permitting. We're talking about just for the art pieces, not for the development project, correct?
Correct. And we were sort of speaking generally there, just how the process itself could be, you know, more efficient. And I think something was addressed in that in one of the updates to the ordinance of maybe more familiar with the order of how it happens. But I think we changed something in that regard, so just...
The timing of the payment, okay.
Yeah, so exploring things like that...
Yeah, they would pay the permitting, they would pay the fee at the end when they're getting their certificate of occupancy and not at the beginning of the...
Right, and I just, and I don't think it was the intent. I just wouldn't want, you know, developers to think that they'll get their building permits faster if they participate.
Yeah, I think we understand the limits of our jurisdiction.
All right, just confirming.
Yeah. Let me share one other thought on that, though, is right now, when a developer is subjected to the 1% for the art ordinance, before it was either/or, now it's going to be a hybrid. But if they're taking on putting the art on their property, that can complicate the overall process. And so one of the things that we believe is that incentivization of people, these companies writing checks into the fund, one, gives the city a lot of flexibility on how those funds are used. But two, it might actually be an incentive to the developer as it simplifies their process, if that makes sense. So it's not expediting their permitting, but it simplifies the process, if that makes sense.
So your objective and key indicators, are these aspirational? Meaning, have we streamlined the process? Are you saying that's something we should do? Do we recognize branding opportunities, or is that something that we need to do?
I think that's something we need to do more of. There's been shades of that with, like I said, NBC Suites holding that Art Walk kickoff event with the recent timing of the permit, or the payment being due. So it's just kind of, those things just kind of came about in the moment. This would be taking a higher-level approach and be more aspirational and make sure we are doing the best job we can do at executing that.
It'd be nice to have some level of detail of how I, as a developer builder, come to Mr. Allen's department and say, here's the fee. What is the process? Is it a form? I want to go this way. How does that look from the end user who is funding this? Right, and that, I mean, your presentation gives us some very high-level statements, but as far as the execution of, this is what we do well, this is what we need to fix, this is what we're working on, there's not a lot of detail there that we can latch onto to say, yeah, this is a sizable amount of work that has already proven to benefit the city. And now we can understand why we're allocating a full-time employee to it.
Yeah. Yeah, honestly, coming back to the, in the importance of having a cultural development coordinator in that role, I mean, it's a, in that staff position, I think the city staff would be making some of these decisions. I don't know if it's necessarily the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee that would be making some of those. There's subject matter experts that are well-versed in exactly what you're talking about. And somebody in that role, I think, would be able to help craft some of the things that you're talking about.
Yeah, and to add on to that, you know, Randy, who was an excellent cultural coordinator, who got us initial draft of the plan that we presented tonight, the position has been vacant since December, but the projects with developers and all of that, and the Luffy, that hasn't gone away. And I know there are staff fielding calls from things that they are just not a subject matter expert in. And when we talk about really delivering the best business-friendly experience, creating that for, you know, all the businesses in the most important five-and-a-half-square miles in Southern California, having a dedicated person for those people to deal with from end to end, for those businesses, corporations to deal with, really just enhances that program. So I think the detail that you're talking about, it really comes out in that staff position, just creating that smooth experience from end to end. And that's just, that's one component of the position, one important component that really solidifies our business-friendly approach from an arts and culture standpoint. And that's one component of their job as they're administering these meetings and also executing all the programming and public art that happens.
Okay, but we have standards for a developer who wants to put art on their campus that says it can't just be your logo.
Right.
Right? It's got to be something that, you know, I don't know how you define art, but there's something in there, whereas I, as a developer, say, if I'm going to put art on my place, here's what it's going to cost, here's what I can't do, and here what I can do. Okay? The other option is I just write a check.
Right.
So is it your opinion that the full-time employee is because of all the programming? Or because of the administration of either receiving a check or looking at someone installing art and saying, yeah, you've checked the box, that's art on your project? Where do you think the labor is in this job?
The labor is those two things, but that's just two of many things. Our capital improvement projects, for one, a lot of them have earmarks for certain arts projects. The Plunge, for one, is going to have a $125,000 mural, excuse me, yeah, the Plunge, $125,000 mosaic mural. There must be an RFQ, an RFQ that goes out for that, that you need a subject expert, subject matter expert, to develop that, to interface with the artist. With all respect to the Community Development Department, they are not dealing with artists on a day-to-day basis. That department isn't equipped with that skill set to interface with such contractors and vendors that we would be working with. And I think it's alluded in the master plan that many of our neighboring cities of the same size, not only do they have a coordinator, but they have staff anywhere from two to 50 employees. So we're really an outlier here. And I think just looking at from a comparison statement alone, perspective alone, you would see that other cities recognize that a lot of work goes into this position isn't just unveiling a mural. There's many, many steps across many facets of the job.
It's not included in this presentation, and I think I saw it maybe in the 18-page version that originated, but there was...
Or perhaps in the, what was the report, Ally, that you did on the overview a couple of months ago?
So that list might be helpful of every public project since the inception of this fund that's taken place. And that was something that I saw. I think when I started on, when I went to my first meeting, I did have a mindset of how much work is this actually? And seeing that list of every project that a developer has been asked to participate in and has, that was extensive. And then in addition to that, operating the events that come out of this fund, I found it somewhat surprising. And it's, I think, too much work to be asking volunteers to do. Additionally, there is nobody on staff, you have to assign somebody to that work. So it's either somebody existing in community services, or Parks and Rec, or perhaps multiple people. So maybe this is more a conversation for a budget meeting, but the challenge of how necessary that position is, I don't... I'm, I guess, surprised that we're having that conversation.
Councilmember Drew.
Okay, you're good, you're...
I think that conversation is going to happen in the next presentation. So, you know, we're going to have it...
That is an item 18, or no doubt.
Right, so on this key recommendations page, I guess I'm trying to figure out, is this being recommended by the Arts and Culture Committee? So, and I guess what I said, I said, direct cultural arts coordinator to seek granting funding for public art. Who's directing the cultural arts coordinator?
So if you were to approve this plan, these recommendations would be instituted by the Cultural Development Program. So who would be directing that person? The person above the coordinator, which would be, in this case, the director of Rexton Park.
Right, I just want to make sure we understand that, you know, the way this works is that there's a, the cultural arts coordinator works for the city, the, your ACC team is there to support the cultural arts coordinator. It's not the reverse.
Right, and this applies to all those. You could have picked out any one of those recommendations.
Yeah, I picked out that one just because that was the first one that stuck. And I just took the wording of it, and, you know, words count, right, as we say. So I just want to make sure we understand that that is the case, that there's a cultural arts coordinator, the money that comes into that fund is city money. It's your job to give us recommendations on how to use it, and that's great. But that's how that system works out. And I do believe that sometimes that concept might get lost. And I get it, because you own it, and you want it, it's your baby, and you want to do it, I get it. But also, there is a funding mechanism for this, and it's great to have these ideas to get more. But I just want to make sure that we understand what the hierarchy of it is and how it works.
Right, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
I would, just to clarify, so item two, that recommendation, we would, if we were to approve this, we would substitute in, the city would seek grant funding for public art and not direct the arts coordinator?
I mean, this is a receiving file, isn't it?
Yeah, no, no, this was, this is an approval... Yeah, no, no, this was, this is an approve. But, just to be clear, yeah, it's, because who, who gets directed as a matter of the city manager's prerogative? I would also say that item three, expand and enhance communications, I can get behind that, as long as the expander and enhancer is a city employee. That, that's something that we cannot delegate on behalf of the.
Yeah, we created the impression that this was being executed by us. That was not our intention.
No, I just want to make sure that people like, that's somebody, we, that, that's somebody who has to be subject to city branding and, and, go branding guidelines and all those things. Uh, one, the update and revise the administrative guidelines. I would respectfully say we should not do that. I, I appreciate the fact they are cumbersome, and I appreciate the fact they are inefficient, and I also appreciate the fact that they are that way by design. Uh, art is a powerful and wonderful and amazing and dangerous thing. So as a result, this process is cumbersome for a reason on approving the pieces of art and how they do it. So wi, with, with all respect for the frustration that those inefficiencies drive, I, I think we should keep it subject to its onerous and painful reviews, um, just to make sure that this thing stays a unifying effort for the city, uh, it doesn't take on a life of its own. Those are my only comments on this.
And on that point, you know, that came from us looking, okay, how can we streamline this for the businesses?
Oh, no doubt, no doubt. Yeah, I mean, look, I would bang my head against the wall if I were to, yeah, it's crazy. But it, it's crazy for a reason. Okay, does anyone want to move approval on this?
Mayor, I, on that last one, you mentioned the, uh, the process itself, I mean, um.
Sorry, which one?
Just the, the process of getting your own art approved is fairly onerous. I know you want it to be somewhat, so it's incentive to actually fund art, we might consider that, but maybe we could get, you know, Mr. Allen to weigh in on that, because I've, I've experienced it firsthand, so, but, so I have one perspective.
A different part of the elephant on that, that as opposed to businesses putting up their own art, the idea that if the city was going to build like Detroit, the giant hanging fist sort of thing, like the process for the city putting in art is.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I thought you meant for businesses. I think, because their intent is, we want to make it a little bit easier for businesses for the art approval process. Is that right, if they do their own art?
Correct. And to Councilmember Baldino's earlier point, uh, there's no like art czar or people deciding what is or what isn't art. It is governed by the ordinance that was approved by previous council.
I respectfully disagree a little bit, having been through it, but I'd rather hear from Mr. Allen, because there was a little bit of this is art or this is not art. It feels a little bit, uh, subjective, I mean, art is. I think the, to the degree that we can simplify that, because, I mean, maybe we don't, maybe we want people to just pay. But I, if the intent is for them to do their own art, and there's been some beautiful art that's gone up in lieu of the 1%, I don't know what your experience is.
Yeah, I, so I'm not as familiar, once, once a developer elects to produce the art onsite, I'm not as familiar with that process, and so Ally might have to correct me.
Yeah, well, that one does say for city-led public art. So that's where I, my, my reservations are sitting, art the city is leading. I would recuse myself from any of those meetings.
Glad I helped.
Fake a seizure. Yeah, Michael Allen will be on a long vacation for any of those meetings. Uh, so with that, are there any further questions?
I just, just under KPIs, can we be a little, a little more specific in adding, dollars raised outside of the 1%, grant dollars raised with goals associated with these in advance, and then dollars spent per beneficiary, or some, some denominator there? I would just feel more comfortable if there was a little more clarity around how we're measuring performance.
Okay, so I'm going to move approval of this plan minus item one. Item two, reflecting that the city will seek grant funding, uh, and item four, ensuring there's a refined KPIs with denominators. Subject two, that's my motion. I'll second. Boil seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Item seventeen, Blaze of Glory win.
Thank you.
Five oh. Thank you, Mr. Pickhaver. All right, item eighteen, the Cultural Development Fund budget and programming for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. Director Mancini, the floor is yours.
Yes. Good evening again, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'm going to go over with you a brief recap of the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five initiatives of the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. And then we are also going to present, uh, a brief proposal for initiatives for twenty-five, twenty-six. So in two thousand twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five, we did have a couple of public art projects completed. Um, one that we've talked about sort of in detail this evening at the Embassy Suites LAX, um, which was unveiled last August during the Art Walk. There were several pieces installed onsite. This was a little bit of a different project, because typically the art has to be outside, uh, the campus or out in an exterior facility or an exterior location. However, because of the hotel's unique, um, opportunity, people are in and out all day, the public can come in and out, in and out all day. Um, we did allow them to create the art inside the building. Um, there are several pieces there. It's been very popular, and, uh, as we mentioned earlier, also there is an interactive immersive experience that users can interface with via Snapchat. So again, this was one of the most significant projects. We also have a project, um, just recently completed at the Hilton Garden Inn, um, and I'll be bringing that and sharing that with the council as well. For the programs and initiatives for twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five, we had a little bit of a smaller scale this year, um, only because the, um, cultural arts coordinator was hired during this year, and we quickly asked and tasked him with focusing on a review of the program and developing the master plan. However, we did continue some of our, uh, most popular programs, um, being the Art Walk that we, um, held in August in conjunction with, uh, John McCullough and George Renfro. And then also our Festival of Holidays event, which takes place in December. And this is a multicultural event celebrating six holidays. Kind of tie it in with our historical tree lighting ceremony that's been taking place on Main Street for many years. Um, there's a variety of activities, um, cultural arts, fine arts performances, activities for children, but also a lot of education opportunities for kids. They actually obtain a passport, and they go around to different activities to learn about the different cultures and holidays, so there's a bit of an education component there as well. And then one of the cool things we added this year with the Art Walk was a public art tour. Um, so as we know, there's public art all around the community, but a lot of the residents don't know that, um, and they don't get to interact with that. So we set up an art tour where we had an open-air trolley, and people could sign up and jump on the trolley at the Art Walk. It was about a forty-five-minute tour, and we drove them all around the community, and staff gave a lot of insight and history into each art piece, um, which I think was very well, um, received by the community. All of the tours sold out. When I say sold out, they didn't pay for them, but, um, they filled up very quickly. And so we are actually looking at doing some more of those tours, um, this spring and summer as well. And this, again, is a way for us to plug the, the donors, right, to go and, to go out and say, this is L'Oréal, this is the piece they installed, this is why they did it. So again, it's, it's making sure residents are connecting the public art with the, with the donors. And then also, we had our wonderful poet laureate, Hope Anita Smith, who did a variety of programs in the community. A lot of, um, poetry, but also different types of spoken word, writing workshops. There was a lot of interaction with the students at El Segundo High School. Um, we did some high school portraits, and just a variety of, of different activities for all, residents of all ages, um, to engage them in arts in a variety of ways. And then also, we offered cultural excursions. Typically, um, we had older adults that would join us for these activities. Um, we've gone out to the Getty Museum, but also they toured the Academy, Academy Museum of Motion Pictures. And then this spring, we actually have, um, groups of fourth graders from El Segundo Unified School District that are, um, going out and taking part in some cultural excursions as well. Um, and we also did, uh, provided some funding for that through the fund. And this is just a snapshot of the budget for the year, um, kind of gives you an idea of the, um, small fees we bring in for Joy Around the World, but more importantly, our developer in lieu payments, um, and then a snapshot of our costs for the year. Obviously, our personnel costs, um, lower than expected with the departure of the cultural arts coordinator. And then, again, as I mentioned, some of the other programs, um, we didn't do as much programming this year as we would typically do. However, we do anticipate that, um, we will end the year with, uh, an estimated fund balance of a million dollars after expending all the funds for this year. And that, so that's what we'll start with July one, million dollars. Then I'm going to turn it over to our Vice Chair, Joan Palmer, and she's going to walk you through the initiatives for the upcoming year.
Hello, bringing it on home, the budget. All right, um, the good news is we're not spending anything more, right? We're staying in line with previous budgets, so no surprises here. Um, and each category are all categories you've seen approved, approved, reviewed, um, before. Starting with the little, little, the, the literary arts, um, thirteen thousand dollars. Examples of those are the poet laureate, um, and community programming, our operating fund. This is just marketing, when we need to print things, um, advertising, signs, flyers that you got tonight for the poet laureate event, things like that. Festival of Holidays, I think we're all familiar with that event, right? What goes on there? We're putting aside twenty-five thousand dollars. Community engagement fund, these are things like the summer concerts that we all love and attend, that everybody's well aware of, or different social and cultural celebrations throughout the year. Um, non-proferent grants that we've talked about for like Gundo Pride, um, Black and Mayberry, the Juneteenth event that we held last year. Um, different artist talks in the library, different presentations, things we do at the schools. Visual arts in community, fifteen thousand dollars. Um, this is something that, um, Sam, when he was our coordinator, started, where we selected, he did the whole RFP process, where we talk about what does that coordinator do, and all the behind-the-scenes, um, labor and work that is required of that role, sending out those RFPs, where we selected three artists, um, and did gifts, different projects that the city now owns. The Art Walk, again, I think everybody knows what the Art Walk is, don't need to spend any more time on that. Um, donor recognition and engagement, as mentioned, last year at the Art Walk, the kickoff event was really our first foray into that, and we would like to grow that and continue to do that, as John mentioned, and went through in our master plan. And then last, but certainly not least, none of this is possible without our Arts and Culture Coordinator. I think you're all well aware that the fund pays for majority of that salary, and then the remaining, um, of that staff person's fund comes out of the general fund. And that's all I've got. Go back to here. So the total request that we're, um, asking this year is two hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Um, that's not inclusive of the public art piece for the Plunge, which the council has already approved, and that's at a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars.
Can you explain what the temporary fees are for? You had temp labor, like twenty grand on your list?
Oh, yes. So this is, this, so we are currently, we are continuously recruiting to try and get us temporary help from now until whenever, or if we are able to hire a cultural arts coordinator. So this is if we have a temp employee come in and assist.
What, you describe what the person does?
Well, we don't have anyone on, we don't have anyone in the position yet, but they would come in.
You're asking for twenty to have somebody come in until you hire someone. You haven't spent twenty yet.
Correct, we haven't spent twenty yet.
You're budgeting twenty of temporary fees.
Between now and the end of the year, correct. Just in the event that we're able to get someone in. We have not had any luck, because it is a, it is a niche skill set.
What's the starting fund balance, right now? Do we know? What's in the fund right now? What's in the?
Well, at the end of the year, it'll be a million dollars.
That's the projected, but do we know what's in it right now?
Um, I don't know off the top of my head.
Because for a while, we were, we were below four.
Yeah, we had, I mean, probably two years ago, it was four hundred grand and.
Yeah, it's, it's gone up and down.
One thirty of that for a salaried employee.
It's a dramatic swing.
Yeah, and there's also, so some numbers that aren't presented are the possibility of one, is it one point nine million dollars in lieu fees? If those projects go forward?
Well, yes. So, so we do have a couple of projects. Um, we actually have one, the Beach Cities Media Campus, um, which we're projecting in the next year or two. I think Michael and I talked about that. That's about seven hundred and fifty thousand. We've got another potential, um, aerospace project coming online, um, so it's, you know, but it is dependent on whether they pay into the fund or do public art onsite.
Thank you.
Yes, and I know, um, Councilmember Keldorf was asking about how many projects we have seen. So there have been twenty-six developer projects completed since we initiated the fund in two thousand and nineteen, twenty-six.
So I had a couple things. Um, on the Festival of Holidays.
Yes.
It's, it's been, uh, obviously become a very popular, it's always a very popular event anyway, when it was, when it was just the Christmas tree lighting, but I mean, you have thousands of people that are coming to this. Uh, the one caveat I have on that is that I know that in certain cases, we are paying for acts.
Correct.
And in certain cases, we are not.
Correct.
I think you either pay for them all, or you pay for none. I, I think you need to try to, we had, this is supposed to be a celebration, in my opinion, is what I thought of, of the different cultures we have within the community, because it's a community event. We're not necessarily trying to attract all of LA County to come down to the event. It's a community event. For the businesses, I know a lot of times, that's like the Christmas party for our local businesses. They come out, they do all that. And I just don't believe that we should be paying outside acts and then not compensating the local acts that are there. So my request, if I have consensus, would be to, I'm fine with the number, but I don't want to pick winners and losers on this. It's either all or, either all of them or none of them.
And I think what, what we've done historically is we brought in professional acts, and then we brought in community acts, and that's sort of how we've delineated them, whether or not that's right, or what the council wants to do.
That I don't, I don't think it was ever discussion about being in professional acts. It was, I know initially, when we had the first time, we had, uh, the first year, it was local Bollywood dancers. The next year, we paid a company to come in.
Correct.
I'm like, why don't we just use the local ones again? You know?
I'm sure there would be a, like a pay scale to execute that. That makes sense to me. And, uh, I think that item in particular may have came in under budget last year, so I think the funds would be there to.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be my only call out, um, on that. Then, let's see, uh, on the number three, the community engagement front, you've mentioned the, the summer concerts. Are we talking about concerts in the park?
Yes, so let me, I'll speak on that just, yeah, so there, we, the, the, summer concerts currently are funded through the general fund. However, this year, um, the ACC has voted to add one additional concert, I think at the cost of thirty-five hundred is what was set aside. However, to your point, the rest of the concerts are funded through the general fund.
Is that just because it's been the practice?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, oh.
It, okay, well, it, it would seem to me if, if one of those musical events is, is part of culture, wouldn't all of them be part of cultural arts?
Absolutely, especially if we had a cultural arts coordinator that could plan and organize that.
We'll get to that.
Yeah, because that's being planned right now by a rec supervisor.
You're doing summer, you're doing summer, uh, concerts in the park regardless.
Correct.
So instead of four, you're suggesting five, right? An extra one.
We're at six.
So we're doing two, uh?
Yes.
Is it five to six, or four to six? Which one is it?
It's five to six.
I'm just saying, I, I, I believe these are the, these things should probably be part of the same money pool.
I agree.
All right, so I, I would make a suggestion on that. And then, look, on the cultural arts coordinator, I, I agree. I, I, I do, if we're going to have a million, potentially almost two million dollars in a fund, you need people, you need someone who knows how to run it. I, I completely get that. That being said, I believe a hundred percent of that should be, of the cost of that position should come out of the Cultural Arts Fund. If you're going to have two million dollars to work with, and you're building on it, and you have this now plan in place to get more revenue coming in, I mean, literally, you're getting a two-million-dollar seed for a business, if you think about it. You, you should be able to budget that over a period of time, and, and the job you do will get people to build, put more into it. So I, I'm actually good with it. I, I, because I do understand the amount of work. I know, uh, I was on this committee for, obviously, for a long time. Michelle's seen it as well. There's a lot of work. I completely get it. And also, you need to be freed up, and, and staff needs to be freed up to do their, their real, their regular jobs. So, uh, but I do believe that a hundred percent of that should come out of the Cultural Arts Fund rather than sort of coming from the general fund, because it's also, remember, where does the money from the general fund come from? From the businesses. Where does the money from the Cultural Arts Fund come from? The businesses. So to me, it all should be funded within that.
And I think initially, the twenty-five percent split was, there was an idea that twenty-five percent of that person's time, at the time it was Sam Lee, would be dedicated to other city work. That never really came to fruition. So I, I agree that a hundred percent of the salary is really related to cultural arts.
I will just comment from being on the, um, the committee for so long, I know our other coordinators, part of the reason why they left was because. I know our other coordinators, part of the reason why they left was because the fund does go up and down, right? So they never knew if they were going to be, have a job, right? If they're going to be paid.
If they have a $2 million seed when they start, and they can't figure out how to budget that, then I question the hire.
I think it goes beyond that, but.
I mean, I will say, it's part of the.
I disagree.
Part of the challenge in recruiting that position is, is their buy-in. Because we have discussed, long before I joined, this has been a topic of conversation, and from an outside perspective, the feeling is, is this worth pursuing? And I have to say, I think that that permeates when you are trying to hire that position. So having a little skin in the game from our general fund does suggest that. Also, let's say it's 100% funded from the general fund, for what, or from the Arts and Culture Committee. For whatever reason, funds go down, anything happened, are we just then, so we don't do events like the Art Walk, the Festival of Holidays? So now all of these things that are falling under that coordinator and the Arts and Culture Committee, somebody else picks up that's on staff?
Can I comment on that? So I think, Councilmember Drew, you raise an excellent point. And I think there's a way to, you know, find some middle ground here. Because it, really, these two positions, the former people that held it, they did leave because of the instability. And if there was a way that, that fund balance did dip, for whatever reason, if somebody pulls out and chooses not to pay the in lieu fee, perhaps there could be a scenario where the general fund, if it's ever necessary, picks up that salary and then, at a future date, is paid back by the Cultural Development Fund to create some sustainability and assurance for the person looking into this position.
We tried that with a golf course once. It didn't work out to the city's benefit.
Except a golf course is a physical asset, that's something, I mean, this is a human who can be let go at some point in time.
A golf course has no revenue, it was upside down too, from a, you know, standpoint.
We have, we have balanced all of those books and unwound those intra, intra-organizational loans at long last, so great rejoicing. I would say though.
Except for the housing fund.
What's that?
Except for the senior housing fund.
That, look, that, no, that's not a loan. That's not, that doesn't owe money to different, different.
And to Councilmember's point, you know, $2 million.
The point being, the point being on this, though, that I completely understand how we disincentivize someone to stick around if, if you're budgeting your own job, effectively, and you're sitting there and like, oh, we're projecting to have $400,000 in the bank. My salary's $115,000. We're not having any concerts this year, or next year. I mean, but look, this is, right? Or he's going to go work at Manhattan Beach. So I think that there is ample reason to, at, at, at minimum, keep the pay arrangement the way it is, so the city does have, provide a degree of backstopping on this. I think that the salary price point on this is entirely reasonable. I think it seems like there's broad agreement on the position already, or at least enough agreement to tip the scale. I would add that the Otis report, it just came out, right? So in the creative economy, also going to, well, Greater Los Angeles is now the center of toy design nationally, and with the toy building opening up, and the Toy Association moving out here, and all of those jobs in toys, the vast majority of them on the creative side. So the idea of enriching sort of the cultural milieu around that makes perfect sense, and considering that some of this is, is obviously from one of those toy makers, I think it makes sense to, to sort of reinforce that. So I'm fine with it, City Manager, I'll come to you in just one moment. I do, do want to put my two cents in to acknowledge, I think the Festival of Holidays point is incredibly well taken, that, that, you know, it's, it's, we either pay everybody, we pay nobody. The idea is we want, especially at that point in time, wanted to celebrate communities that were never coming out here. So I think we were just all stunned, the first group we saw was, there's all this gigantic South Asian dance participation. So I strongly agree with that. I would like to see the Art Walk at least consider, going back to the multi-day format, which I like better. Just in case, so you don't have to worry about missing one. And lastly on it, well, I'll hold that one for the end. City Manager?
Yes, a couple of things, Mayor and Council, on the, I believe, a year ago, when we recruited for the Cultural Arts Coordinator position, we identified, in the job announcement, we did share that, at that time, funding was iffy, either way. So the person that was applying for the job knew that, that, that funding was kind of tentative, if you will. And then even during the interview process, we discussed that, just, just by way of information. And then also, while you were discussing, I, I did text the Finance Director, and the current actual fund balance as of July 1st is 867,000.
I just want to put on the record that I absolutely agree that, I think it was Councilmember Drew, that this should be paid solely through the Arts and Culture. That was the intent when we approved this, 1% for the arts. And if we get the right person, and we're measuring them on their performance, a couple of metrics of which are determined based on how many outside funds they actually generate and grant dollars, it's in their best interest to go out and do that. And we've got seven or eight years of operating ahead of us. What's the balance, 700,000, we're burning how much a year? Okay, 300. So we have at least three years ahead of us. We know there'd be subsequent programs. And three years is a lifetime for someone in this position, probably. So I, I think that it should absolutely be paid for through the fund itself.
100%?
100%, unless that person is doing something for the city. I mean, the one thing that popped in my head was, I hate to use the word ombudsman, but you know what I'm getting at, is if they're in, if they're the front person to talk to somebody about their art, as part of their job is, hey, we're going, I'm going to help, I'm going to get you through this process, I'm going to shepherd you through this onerous process, why can't I also be someone in planning that helps? Because we know there's friction. We just had a meeting, Mayor, with developers in town, that the process could be better, even though you have, we have one of the best departments in LA, and our permits are top five, right? In terms of time processing, there's still opportunity for us. So if that person could do something else that benefits the city and the general fund, then I would support it. But if they're solely Arts and Culture, I feel strongly they should be paid for by the Arts and Culture Fund itself. Is that a motion? Oh, I'm not going to make a motion if there's not. I don't know, I think it's Lance and I that feel that way. I don't know if anyone else feels that way. There's only one way to find out. Didn't you have some other caveats in there too, though, Mayor? I thought you did.
No, go, I was waiting to see what you were saving for the end.
What's that?
I wanted to see your last line.
I was waiting to defeat him before I.
Defeat, well.
No, I, I, one thing I, I thought worth addressing in this, and it's similar to that point, is there an item of this that we should be taking for, because there was a process identified in our meeting, that the permitting process for onsite art, that those guidelines were difficult, I did not know if there was a part of this fund, or the funding, or, or this allocation that should be funded from, that could be taken off of this and put onto community development as far as that person's role. So similar to what the mayor said, but from a different point. For the mayor. The forever mayor.
I think I need a little clarification on what the difficulty is.
So it's a little bit, it's a, it's a little bit of, of Councilmember Boyle's point. Like, can we have someone from planning do this role?
From a permitting standpoint, yes.
It's just the wrong personality type.
Well, planners don't go to planning school.
Yeah, but I wonder, does it? Yeah, but part of this is, I, so my, my, my zinger for the end is, is this a project management role? Or is this an artist's role?
I, I think it's tough to, to ask, and I think you found that it's tough to ask because we haven't been able to give you a clear-cut answer, because it's probably a little bit of both. And there's, there's functions that can certainly happen in my shop, and there's functions that certainly can happen in Ally's shop. But regardless of how we splice it, it requires the coordination of both shops. And so maybe it's something that we have to come back and, and really come up with some other solutions.
Or conceivably, it could just be something that you, that if we recruit this role, presuming it does get budgeted, that the personality type we get is someone that has some, some strong project management capability.
You know, if I can just add to that, again, I use our previous coordinator as an example. I mean, as he worked through the process, and he came on as the Arts Coordinator, but he worked very closely with Michael's people on the permitting side, and I think did address some of the expedited issues that you bring up. So I think we can, if we can find someone with the arts background, but is also, can be coached or trained.
Sure.
I think there's an easy crossover to expediting permitting also.
Very well. Any further counsel discussion?
I just want to say, if there is a movement for the Arts and Cultural Committee to start paying for the concerts in the park, that we still get our Doobie Brother cover bands, and like, you know, like, keep it to what the people want, right? You know, like, there's a place for, for art and culture, and then there's a place just to sit out on the grass and hang out with your friends and family.
We absolutely understand that.
Yeah, you got it, yeah.
We understand that.
So let me leave you with that thought.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no closed captioning of the Rod Stewart lyrics from that cover band.
So just as a point of clarification, we have, we don't have the summer concerts in this proposed budget.
It's just one of them.
We have one, correct, but are you?
Time out.
Yes.
Go to the budget.
Yes.
It's $30,000. How much do the four concerts in the, or five concerts in the park cost us? Right now, out of the general fund?
About 15,000.
Okay, so.
But that's not the summer concert series in the park, that's.
I, I'm aware. I'm, I'm saying that it's a line item that you want to add in there. I'm saying that, I, I'm not looking at bumping that thing to 45.
Right.
I'm saying, isn't.
So within third, within that 30,000, we don't.
And again, if I'm alone on that, I'm alone on that, that's fine. It's, I, that's what I'm saying, I almost feel like I'm, you have, what, five or six things up here? Let's go, maybe go line by line, because I think there's some easy agreement on certain ones. And I think there's going to be some things that we have to talk through on others. So, like, for example, do we go through and say we're good on the, the literary arts and the operating fund? And, you know, like, do we have consensus on those two? The Festival of Holidays with the addition of, you know, you pay one or you pay none? Are those, is that a way to do this?
To your point, on the Festival of Holidays, do you know roughly what percentage of that is for talent, outside talent? Is the majority, or is it no?
It's probably 10%.
Oh, okay, so it's pretty.
Yeah, it's a pretty small amount. This, really, it's all the other activities.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Then I'm okay with it. I do like Lance's suggestion, though, about either one fee or no fee, or even just all local. All local, you know, like kids that are doing stuff anyway, or, and adults.
So Chris, should I just make a motion to approve on those three with that caveat?
Move away. Well, we don't, let's not do the line item veto. I think we can probably get all these bundled together in one that might be passable.
You'd like us to find room to fund the concerts in the park in the current budget? Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't know about that.
I think that's a gradual goal.
Councilmember Baldino's request of preserving.
Yeah, I think it's a gradual goal. I'm just saying, if you want to do one, great, but if you take over the whole thing, don't, you know, don't take away that AC/DC cover band, because.
How is that not culture?
It is, 100%, okay.
Kind of my point, my point is, is that they're all part of the same thing. Just because the Arts and Culture Committee chooses one of the groups doesn't mean that the other five are not part of Arts and Culture. My point is, is that if that is what it is, it should come out of that fund for all of them. That's my point. One's not different from the others, except for what level of music you're playing or what type.
That's fine, but then that 30,000 now really only leaves, what, like, 12,000 to do the other line items on there? So how does that affect things?
Yeah, I think there would be consensus from our committee, guessing, to just add on on top of that with the funds that we have. However, I do agree with the gradual approach. Our addition of the additional concert was to just broaden the theme outside of all the things that you love, just to give something a little different. And, yeah, so it was our, I think it was, do you remember what's?
Is it Selena, who it isn't?
Latin jazz. Was going to be the sixth concert. But I think over time, I think last year, Director Mancini.
I would pick every band, if you have me.
Yeah. Director Mancini presented to us that we may be taking over these costs over time, and I think that's how we took it to be a gradual approach. We said, okay, why don't we add one if, if the funds are there? And that's, that's where that came from.
Start with one.
Yeah, start with one.
Okay. I'll give up the ghost on that one.
All right. But we'll work towards it.
Yep, that's fine.
We'll work towards it, because I agree with you.
All right. It, look, I don't, I don't want to beat this dead horse, but really, this is just a matter of a line item. When we get together into our budget, sliding, I mean, the staffing of it doesn't change. The people that, who implement the park, it's just what bucket of money. So if we're going to just move one Excel sheet, you know, one cell to the other thing, like, I'm not sure that's a substantial.
Okay, and so just for point of clarification, sorry, is the council directing us to do, are we keeping the same structure with 75% fund?
I think we're getting there.
Okay, you want to keep going, all right.
So, right, and you had the.
You had one on the previous page. I think we're good on that one, Visual Arts and Community, I think everybody was okay on that.
Yep.
Now the next one?
Any issues with that? Nope. Else going to Art Walk?
I think we're good there. Oh, maybe not.
That, I mean, the 12,000 is really kind of a misnomer, isn't it? Because that's art, it just happens to be done at the same time as the Art Walk.
And the, and this is a placeholder.
So the 45,000, what is that? Is that what we've been paying?
Yes. That's what we pay. This is the same that asked from last year. So it has, it's, yeah, I mean, it's gone up.
There's always an art component associated with the Art Walk, whether it's a mural installation, last year, some augmented reality. So it's, it's sort of just lines up with the Art Walk each, each year. As it comes from John and George's team.
And then donor recognition engagement is new, but this is something we feel is really important.
It's a good idea.
We do the kickoff reception, but maybe we do others throughout the year, where we're bringing these people to interact with council and the community.
And that line item was created by reducing the operating fund and also reducing community, Visual Arts and Community a little bit. So that is not new money, it's accounted for.
All right, so now we get to the elephant in the room. I think maybe the first thing, I, I am personally, I'm saying, I'm for having the position. I just disagree with the way it's currently being funded.
What if we asked, look, we'll do 75, 25, but that 25 is out of Michael Allen's office to help facilitate and basically make the developers' lives easier, right? So you've got 75 out of the arts fund, and then the 25 out of the general fund is just, your job during the interview is to make this as painless as possible for the people either writing the check or installing the art. And then everything else is programming and events and, and everything else. To me, that's.
Always, I always kind of put him on the spot. I mean, bottom line, if he says no, he looks like a bad guy. So let's, let's, let's be realistic here. I, I, I think, I think Ally and I can come to a solution. I think what's helpful is just understanding what the desire of council is, and then I think Ally and I can come up with a solution. There's, there's definitely things from a administrative component that can easily be handled in community development through the permitting process or, or from a management analyst. The programming of art or the events and activities has to live in Wreckin' Park. But I think there's a, there's a solution that we can come up with, but I, I think we have to understand how you want us to slice it.
I think what Councilmember Boyle and I were broadly driving at is the hardest part of this person's job i- is managing the, the art process, right? Managing the city program and the art process and working with the committee. The hardest part of everyone's job with him is understanding how to work this process. So businesses coming in who are building a, a, developing something, understand how the process works, because it's not intuitive necessarily to your current staff. It's not really intuitive to a lot of people, because it's a very niche piece. So that is the, that is the pain point that as a city, we are trying to solve for. We can handle setting up parades. We can run summer concerts. We know how to do those things, like, we, we, but the hard part is, the very niche scale is navigating this novel process. We can handle setting up parades. We can run summer concerts. We know how to do those things like we, we, but the hard part is the very niche scale is navigating this novel process. So that's what we are trying to solve for here.
I, I think, and that's helpful. I appreciate that, Mayor. I think with that, and you know, we're, we're going into budget season, I think, I think Ally and I can sit down and figure out in order to accomplish that, how much of it can be housed with our existing staffing level with CDD? How much of it can be housed within Wreckin Park? And what are the demands of, of that? Is it a part-time, full-time, quarter-time, three-quarter time? What does that actually look like? And I think we have to come back and ask for that with some actual backup.
And I think we have to specifically identify in the job announcement, the responsibilities of this person will include this, because the previous job descriptions really didn't, didn't discuss the city portion of that. It was just more of an arts position. So I think when we, we announced the position, we clearly delineate that part of this will be the per, taking a developer through the permitting process.
I would guess that we're talking probably twenty-five percent administration, fifty percent just project coordination for delivering on things, and then the other twenty-five percent is, do you know what art is? Is it Picasso? Is it a Van Gogh? So for me, it's more like the practical, pragmatic, how are we going to get someone through the process? How are we going to put on all these events that people have great ideas for? Those are the fundamental roles. You happen to be really smart about art, great. But as far as delivering results, like, it's gonna, it's an administrative task. It is, it is a bureaucratic task to take someone's hand and say, this is how we're going to work the program for you, so.
Is that a motion?
No, I don't know what that was.
Well, I mean, it's like, if, if, Michael, what you're saying is, is that you can, you can grasp, what is it, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars worth of, it, it, someone can do that much work in, in your department that alleviates someone else from having to do that work. So it's a value added. If it's a value added, it makes sense to split it. If it's not a value added and we're just hiding the cost, then it doesn't make sense to me. So that's how it's going to have to come out, in my opinion. Otherwise, I like the compromise.
Okay.
We'll look at it next year, right?
Yes. Any other questions? That concludes our presentation.
Would anyone like to move approval?
Yeah, we really didn't change anything, did we, after all that?
Unless you wanted to.
Approving the budget.
Festival of Holidays.
Unless you wanted.
That's not budget, but yeah.
Okay, well then, I'll move approval.
Do you want to do anything with the summer concerts on the budget?
No, I want to give them, give them the one to go.
One to start.
Just one?
You get one shot with me.
One start.
I'm just kidding. I'm sure.
Jazz flute?
The city band.
So yeah, no, I, unless anyone's got a modification, I think we've kind of given more than enough guidance for them to scratch their heads for a while on this one.
So what it's worth, I would like to see the concerts in the, in the budget effective immediately.
Would someone like to move that?
I'll move approval that we approve everything that was presented, uh, with the exception that the concerts in the park, summer concerts in the parks series is moved to the Cultural Development Fund budget. And also that it's clear that we want the staff to ascertain what the level of responsibility is for this position and where it should be charged accordingly on the general ledger. Boils on the first, is there a second?
Second.
Second for Drew. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Well, we, you just changed your motion.
No, he made the motion. I didn't make it. I didn't get a second.
You didn't move anything?
You didn't move anything.
I know.
You just, you, no, 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 he did that. There was no move.
I think there's lack of clarity on.
He was in neutral. He was in neutral. He was California stopping. We have four ayes. Is there an oppos, oppose? Or abstention?
Yeah, I think a lack of clarity is, how do we pay?
That's the only thing I'm knowing on.
Ah, well, the motion passes four one.
In the park, the money for it is coming through your department. That's what it means.
Right.
You're still running it.
Right, so the clarification question is, uh, the other line items that we had under there, are we adding to that item? Or do they just go away?
We'll review the minutes. No, I'm kidding. What we did, what, what happened there is we, we moved all of the summer concerts into and on top of the current budget. So did not wedge in, it is in addition to the budget. So the budget in your Wreckin Parks moved over on the.
That's just where I'm seeking. Yeah, that's where I'm just seeking clarity.
So, yeah, so the line item that is currently in the Wreckin Park budget is slid over, and if we want to change that, we have a budget review coming up on May fifth, and we can re, we can clarify that split at that point. But this budget is approved. You have your coordinator at the current split.
Thank you.
By a vote of four to one, with Keldorf losing.
I just feel like that's a misrepresentation of my intention. The irony is not lost. I, this was a setup. That's what this.
All right. Uh, arts and culture coming in at an even seventy-seven minutes of our meeting. Committees, commissions and board presentations, any further? Seeing none, reports city clerk.
I'd like to talk about art. Um, happy April Fools to everybody. Um, as of today and other breaking news, we have a name change. The City Clerks Association of California will now, as of today, be known as a California Municipal Clerks Association. It was embargoed, but now it's big news and we can spread the word. And that's just better to reflect the membership. There are clerks who are not municipal clerks, but this, uh, group represents municipal clerks. And that is it.
Very well.
But I would really like to have somebody, uh, help me out with that motion, because it kind of went all over the place. So I will be looking for clarification when we do the minutes.
We will.
I would greatly appreciate that.
We'll go to the game tape. Uh, Councilmember Keldorff?
Yes, last Wednesday, I attended eighty-eight for twenty-eights, which is LA County's planning and coordination in advance of the Olympics in twenty-twenty-eight. I was so happy to turn around and see Michael Allen there, because I felt a little out of water. Um, it was super well-attended, so there are eighty-eight cities in LA County. The intention is to have these meetings quarterly to start talking about preparation for the Olympics. There were many things that were interesting for me. What really caught me was starting this year, like this spring, the NOCs, which are what, the National Olympic Committees from all of these different countries, will be coming here kind of figuring out where they want to land. And so we need to start courting them. Like, they will say, oh, we want to do this in your city. I mean, UCLA is going to be housing athletes, but it extends way beyond that. So certain, I think, certain countries have already said, we're going to train at Stanford, and they're looking at cities around there and come down for the Olympics, but this is a long way of saying, I think it goes back to this idea of having an, at least an ad hoc committee to start talking about this. Um, so I'm going to suggest that we put that on a future agenda and talk about how we, as a community, participate in that. Arts and culture are also super timely, because that was a big topic. There was a survey that went out. What are you most interested in, concerned about? Mobility is obviously on there, transportation. Um, but in addition to that, arts and culture was pretty high, and there were a lot of communities that were asking, how do we attract people to the city of Carson to see what we have going on? And so I think we would be remiss if we missed out on that opportunity to market ourselves and to participate. And that's all I got.
Councilmember Drew?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Councilmember Boils, you have an agenda item.
Yeah, I'll try and be as quick as possible. Um, I think that's a great idea. Councilmember Keldorff, I would say that on, uh, here's what I, we learned. Mayor Pimentel and I, and Barbara Voss, and Christina Ravelas, and Eduardo, and some others, Paul, Paul Samaras, yeah, exactly, met with Continental Development Corp., Richard Lundquist, his team, Mark, Mark Telus, uh, which is Mar Ventures, not Mar Ventures, sorry, Smoky Hollow Industries, thank you, and their team, about five or six brokers, couple startups in town, some of them very, like, seed rounds, some of them seed, Series B, about their experience in El Segundo. This is one of many conversations we've had, but this one was specifically directed at real estate, and what do we need to do differently? And there's some good things that came out of that, because I think the intent that Barbara had in mind and her team was, let's, we already know Mr. Allen, his team is doing the land use update for the general plan, so Mrs. Voss said, let's use this opportunity to get input, which was great. And they felt like they were included in that process. One of the key takeaways was, uh, a comment that was made by one of our staff members about we, as a city, not, not a state requirement, the, so California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA, probably one of the most beloved or hated acronyms in California, depending on what, you know, if you're a lawyer suing them under false pretenses of environmental issues, sorry, Mark, or, or others, right? But that happens, um, or others. But it's, what I learned is that we actually potentially impose a SEQA requirement on any developments that are larger than fifty thousand square feet. Then I met with Mr. Allen subsequent to that, and Mr. George, and learned that that might not be entirely accurate, but that there is an opportunity for us to revisit what our specific requirements are when developments are done. Because the last thing we want to do is make it more difficult than it already is to get these properties built in the city of El Segundo. The state already makes it almost impossible, which is why we have such a housing scarcity crisis. And so I would just like staff to look into that, and maybe as a way dovetailing with the land use element is get feedback about that, and let's look for ways that we can take all the friction out of the process, or as much of it is within, is within our control. So that was really it. And Mr. Allen, if you want to provide more context?
No, no, and I appreciate, um, Councilmember Boils, the, the feedback. It's, it's very timely. Uh, we just awarded the contract to MIG to kick off the general plan land use element update, uh, last month. And, and I, you know, I'm thankful for the timing of the roundtable discussion that you, that you participated in, and the ability for Eduardo and Paul to participate in that, because we are just gearing up with, for the community outreach component of, of this update. And being able to fold in this question in that community engagement process with stakeholder groups, in addition to the folks that were at that roundtable, is, is going to help drive this, this next eighteen months of this process. And so it's very timely. It's, it's the right moment. It's, it's glad, I'm glad that we were there. Um, but it, it'll definitely help inform our line of questioning and the feedback that we seek to get from the stakeholder groups, some of which will be the same folks. We're, we're going to reach out to them again. The consultant team and staff will sit down with them on one-on-one or, or small group sessions to dive a little bit more into that. Um, and more specifically, we can, we can ask and charge the consultants at taking a look at this through the lens of does, is fifty thousand square feet the right amount? Are there other thresholds? Are there other land uses? Because it's not the only trigger. There's, there's FAR requirements, there's development agreements, there's things that we want to, to maintain in terms of levers, uh, in, in controlling certain types of development. And so those are all the right questions, and those are all the things that we can really dive into with, with the consultant team and these stakeholder groups in the next couple of months here.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. So there's nothing to do on this. I think staff's going to incorporate this feedback anyway. Just a couple other quick things. We did AED training. We, as a city fire department, did a great job the other day rolling out AED training at Park Vista, which is obviously, there's a need for that there in a facility with mostly older people, all older people, I should say. And so they're going to have an AED. I think the plan is one on every floor, and they actually trained us all on it. It was, it was really well done. The fire department did a great job. Um, and then badge pinning ceremony. It was great to see our two newest officers. Man, do you feel old when you see them come in? Um, mid to late twenties, I think, these guys, early twenties, maybe. Anyway, they're very impressive young men. And then I just want to congratulate, um, Jackson Kalb and Melissa Kalb with the newest restaurant in town, Jaime, Jaime, I should say Jaime Taqueria, which is open in Friday. So, um, yep, it's great. Thank you.
Mayor Pimentel?
It's not Jane Taqueria? Are you sure? Uh, nothing to report, but, uh, Councilmember Keldorff, can we piggyback on your agenda item to also talk about the World Cup and these other events? Because I feel like there'll be some overlap about how do we just bring people in, right?
Absolutely. So at this event, they talked about, I think there are eight major events happening leading up to the Olympics, so Super Bowl, um, World Cup, yep.
Okay, yeah, nothing for me, Mayor.
Let me add some complexity to the miasma of Los Angeles County, and that the city of Los Angeles is hosting their own event this weekend to talk about all the major events. Yeah, right. It would be, you saw this, LA City Council went berserk, that Sailing was going to be in, in Long Beach instead of Pedro. Uh, so the, who gets what, uh, will, will not have as much to do with the logical administration of the games, I think as much to, to some, uh, horse trading going on. So, uh, this thing, this weekend, I will, I will send you the information on it, um, because I, I got invited to it. It's, it's supposed to be, uh, Mayor Bass is hosting it, so without the LA City Council.
Yeah, which is weird, because there were people from the city of LA, their sports and entertainment, whatever it is.
No doubt, no doubt. So I think there will be a, uh,
Special events office, thank you.
Special events. Uh, so I will, I will send that over, but yeah, that is, that's coming up this weekend to talk about an identical issue, uh, doubtless to come up with, uh, completely different recommendations. But I'll send that over, and I do like the idea of, of having some people focus on this, particularly on the, on the marketing side. Uh, and other bad news, LA Sanitation, uh, lost its Supreme Court appeal to its thirty-six million dollar lawsuit defeat. It is appealing some of, it has separate lawsuits, uh, to compete, try and recover some of that back from the petitioner. Uh, but most of that will come from LA Sanitation's reserve, um, policy to pay that off. Uh, that does not tie into the rate increases. We will see east of PCH. Uh, those rate increases will begin next year and will be ten percent per year for the next three years. LA Sanitation's rates are markedly lower than LA, than the city of LA sanitation rates. Uh, so it's not unduly burdensome. It comes down to about twenty-some dollars a year per household. Again, those aren't our residents paying that, but, uh, for our, our business residents will. Uh, also, they have, they'll be debuting, uh, their further advances and their water reclamation efforts. You know, there are, there's a big, the big water recycling, it is a fifteen billion dollar project for LA County. Uh, that's projected to be done by twenty-thirty-five. Uh, LA City, LA Sanitation, Hyperion's, uh, is now pushed back to twenty-fifty, so. Do what you will with that piece of information, but at least it won't affect your rates directly. Mayor, uh, former Mayor Boils discussed the roundtable we went to. I attended Sweat Equity Alliance's meeting. That was enlightening to see uh, some of the perspectives on political developments. Police Chief Elias and I went down to, uh, the e-bikes thing that, um, as some of our Marisucci was hosting in Hermosa. Delighted to see that, well, we have the occasional e-bike issue. There's some places that have e-bike problems. I mean, real problems. And that one guy got up there, the Vietnam Vet guy, I mean, he had, he went, that was, that was a remarkable display of how much he does not like e-bikes. Also today, not April Fool's Day for your sales tax. Measure A goes in. Uh, so you can really, if you want to just do, put your money in a blender and see exactly the good use of funds that will be. That starts today, so we go up, on top of our Bradley Burns piece, and, uh, thanks to Natalie Myers and the team at L'Oreal, they put on that First Responders Day, uh, which was incredible. Uh, I, I just went over there and saw what they opened up to, to, you know, police, fire, public works. Uh, it was super cool. They could do everything, get massages, sound baths, play pickleball, all kinds of like, like, ah, look at that. Uh, but yeah, they're great. Obviously, they do, they do a lot for the city and our, our wonderful corporate citizens. Uh, I wrote down a bunch of other stuff, but I can't read it because it's really small. So with that, uh, city attorney? I think, city manager?
Uh, yes, Mayor, just real quick on Hyperion. Forty-two odor complaints since, over the last couple of weeks, but no violation notices issued. And then also, they're telling us that the bioenergy facility will be down for maintenance from April fifth through the twelfth. Um, and I guess during this outage, biogas is, um, will be flared. Um, but they're not expecting that hydrogen sulfide or any odors will be emitted.
You know, I sent them a note from that response and asked them with that, what do they do? Like, give us the account. If you're going to be tuning this thing up, tell us where these twenty megawatts go. And I've gotten no response from them. But they're like, oh, we're going to shut this thing down, shut down this generator. I was like, well, in that case, you're going to be doing maintenance on it. You're doubtless going to know how much power you're using, because you'll be able to see what you're pulling off the grid.
We'll reach out tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, that would be fascinating to know. We have people around here who are crying out for electricity. And if they've got, you know, we'll be able to know exactly how much the twenty megawatts they have to use on, on premises to run operations.
All right, we'll get an answer. And then also, their first Hyperion Pipeline Newsletter, if you remember, I think Hill the Bay is working with them on that. They're trying to make a better effort to outreach to the community. So their first newsletter came out last month, and that there'll be a, a regular monthly newsletter highlighting education, updates, and also improvements that they're undertaking at the facility.
I like the way they described it as enriched biosolids, and that, that was vomiting. I forgot what I was going to write, and, and Barbara, you should have thrown something up here. We hosted, uh, a group from London's, the London's, a bunch of innovators from London came and met, and, you know, it's interesting, they want to talk to people in Boston. No, they went to New York City, they went to San Francisco, and they went to El Segundo. Like, how cool is that? And then today, there was a similar group, fifteen, uh, startups from Australia. They're going to two places, Silicon Valley to look for money, and El Segundo to look for, for where to put stuff. Uh, I mean, that's, I mean, that's kind of awesome, so. What's that? Yeah, fire away.
On Hyperion, real quick, any progress on the job search for the GM?
Unfortunately, no. Uh, they continue to tell us that they're, uh, it's open until filled. They're, uh, seeking resumes, but as of right now, there's no timeline, unfortunately. That may be something to bring up with Mayor Bass on Saturday.
Like us to consider, uh, last time we spoke to Mayor Bass, it was in DC to pull her aside to tell her we're about to sue the city of LA. And she didn't know that we were having an issue with Hyperion, so I would strongly suggest we, you know, have a letter come from the mayor. Some teeth, I mean, this is ridiculous. We're going on a year now.
Yeah.
And, uh, if it's just a matter of budget, we know DWP, for example, pays way more than Hyperion. Well, they got, they got to fix that mechanism with the inner city, but. And then the second question is, the, seems to be, like, you said no NOVs with all those, the forty-something?
Right, forty-two.
Is that maybe influenced by the new AQMD inspector that Hayes was replaced by? Or why all of a sudden are we having calls, complaints, but no NOVs? Is it, or is something different?
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. It could be that. There is a new inspector, um, maybe the, you know, I know when there are a certain number of notices filed that they, AQMD does send someone out there. Um, and then they make an assessment, so it could be that, but I, I, I don't know the exact answer. Elias, anything to add to that? I mean, why, why no violation notices, even though the complaints?
No, other than what you just said. Normally, the, uh, AQMD inspector gets out there, and after he or she confirms that at least, uh, six of those complaints are valid, they do not issue an NOC, and, and the.